...May nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Briefly go over our agenda for the evening. We will have selectmen's liaison reports and comments, then public comment for items otherwise not on the agenda, and the town manager's report. Then we will have a certificate of recognition for Eagle Scout Duncan Dietz. We will see a, I don't know if we're seeing a demonstration or just a talk tonight, probably more of a talk, but we welcome the robotics team from Reading Memorial High School. They'll be at seven thirty tonight. Then we will have a report from the, our member to the Citizen Advisory Board of the RMLD. We'll be discussing some solar opportunities for the town at seven fifty-five, and receiving a report from the Climate Advisory Committee at eight P.M. Then we will be doing a, is that just a certificate, Bob, the Walk Reading Weekend?
Yes.
Okay.
There'll be some representatives.
There'll be some representatives in the Walkable Reading and Trails Committee here, and we have a certificate that will be voting for them. We'll, they'll be picking up two continued liquor license hearings for Grumpy Doyle's and Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza at eight thirty and eight forty, and then discussing the Lincoln Street Forty-B project at nine P.M. And then finally, five boards and committees have been invited in to discuss their status. If no actions taken by the board, they will sunset on June thirtieth, and they will be in at nine thirty. So with that, can we hear from, start with John on liaison reports?
It was a busy weekend for me personally, so I don't have a report this evening.
Well, good. I need the time.
I see the rest of my time to the gentleman from Beaver Road.
Well, it has been, I've been busy the last two weeks. I visited the Board of Health. They had a, you know, a very interesting discussion in a couple of different directions. One was how we align territorially. They've suggested to the town manager that we consider aligning, or realigning, I should say, with the Greater River Valley Association where we were previously engaged, and so I think that's a topic of discussion for now. They also have been working closely with staff around the job description for the, for a new health director, and they heard a couple of, a couple of requests for variances. Most importantly, I would say that it is a three-person board, and they do have one person who needs to resign as a result of time commitments to both business and family, and another whose term is expiring and is not renewing. So we'll be engaging at least two people. They also engage the idea that, given the size of the board, it might not be a bad idea to consider associate membership.
Oh, yeah.
Because they have struggled with three people.
You get in quorum.
You get in quorum, you know.
Why is it three? Has it always been three?
Don't know the answer to that, Barry.
When did the charter, when you look at maybe expanding it all a bit?
It didn't come up, and they didn't make the request, but I do know that it, you know, has, over the last year that I've been liaison, it's been, the quorum has been an issue for them, you know. So I think that they were pretty happy about the idea that they would, might be able to expand, but are probably going to be taking that up at another meeting. And I'm going to give the report for the ad hoc committee, for the, for the Committee on Firearms Safety, and I'm going to do that probably for the last time as we made nominations for both the chair, a vice chair, and a secretary for that ad hoc committee. Kevin Sexton will be the chair. Bryn Burkhardt will be the vice chair, and I'm the guy left taking the notes, so I'll be, I will be the secretary, and that's fine with me. And it was, I think, an excellent first meeting. All the members were present, which was Kevin Sexton and Bryn Burkhardt, Jonathan Scully, David Pennett, Ken Lafferty, and Deputy Chief was also there along with myself. And essentially what we did was march through the point-by-point report that we were asked by the town, by the town meeting to proceed with this committee around. So that was reviewed. We kind of set an agenda for what we were hoping to accomplish. The meetings were, the future meetings out into the midsummer are set now for May twenty-seventh, June eighth, June twenty-second, and July thirteenth. And we began with some assignments that are all starting to roll in. Kevin, I just was doing that report.
Great, thank you very much.
And lastly, from a liaison standpoint, I visited Recreation, and they've got a very busy agenda, as you might imagine, in a lot of different directions. Right at the moment, there is a, a final review of the Birch Meadow survey that's going to be hopefully released on Thursday, and that's going to be finalized by the Birch Meadow Committee and the rest of the Recreation Committee on tomorrow afternoon by conference call. Several amplified sound permits were approved. There was also a discussion about the operational plan that they're working on, which I think will be ready for the public hearing on the lights around Birch Meadow. I think that they've done a lot of good work on that already. They've actually begun, the Recreation Committee has been consulting several of the youth organizations that'll be involved with the lighting situation, so that's well underway, and I think at our, I think it's at our next meeting, at the June second meeting, there'll be a public hearing around Birch Meadow, so Recreation is working hard on that one. I think that one of the other things that's really notable, it's so interesting to see how Recreation has expanded and how popular it is. The summer camps, for example, and there's a little spreadsheet that was passed out to me. The summer camps that the Recreation Department was running, five short years ago, had two hundred and two signups. This year, five hundred and forty-six. So, I mean, in that window of time, it has just grown exponentially, and that doesn't even begin to mention the junior camps, which are kind of a morning and afternoon thing, which are also expanded not as dramatically as, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred percent, but each and every one of their programs, one's jumping from eighty-five to a hundred and thirty-seven. The, the before camp and after camp programs, again. Last year, the after camp programs had thirty-seven participants, a hundred this year. Forty-seven before camp, now ninety-one. So the point is that clearly Recreation is very alive and well, and, you know, putting out a great product that's greatly subscribed to throughout the town. Lastly, which was not exactly a liaison report, but another good news report around Boy Scouts. Glad we have Eagle Scout with us tonight. Class of sixty-four for me, so I'm glad to have you in the Brotherhood. The Troop Seven-O-Two is celebrating this week its hundredth anniversary as a continuous Boy Scout troop. One of, of less than two dozen in the United States that can so, so claim a hundred-year history. They had a big celebration of alumni and former scoutmasters and parents. On Saturday night, I was asked to come and speak with them, and it was really quite a great night, and they are, I was also asked to pass along that they're having an open invitation following Memorial Day services at Laurel Hill in the Old South Church. They're hosting a general reception for everyone. So a lot to celebrate in the way of Recreation Youth Programs, and hats off to the Troop Seven-O-Two, who, interestingly, the real, one of the real stalwarts, and the person that they call the grandfather of their Boy Scout troop, is a familiar name to all of you, Ben Nichols. Ben was involved in that Boy Scout troop from nineteen twenty till his death at a hundred and three, just a couple of years ago, continuously registered along that time with, with the Boy Scout troop. So it was kind of a good news thing, and I thought everybody'd like to hear about it.
Thank you very much, John. Barry?
A couple of things I attended, seems like a couple of weeks ago, forever ago. The building committee for, for the library, they're, they're moving ahead. They're under budget, they're on time. An issue that had, that came up, which took up a good chunk of the meeting that I went to, dealt with some issues around the port cashier. That's the, it looks like where they used to draw horses up to.
Oh, yeah.
An issue, what, when they got the building bids in, and they were substantially below what they thought, they looked at some things to add in, and one of the things that they were going to add is an innovation lab, which is essentially going to be where that port cashier is. They're going to glass it, and they're going to make usable space.
Oh.
Around that, which is actually kind of cool. It was the, you know, when they were kind of going through their program, if the, if the money came in, the innovation lab was going to be kind of the first thing that they'd want to put back in. And so when they were able to get, when the, when the construction bids came in significantly lower, they added that back in. But what's going to, what it requires, however, is, you know how, kind of, I don't have any pictures of the, you know, there's the four columns.
Right.
When you go to the front of the building, and it has the slate roof on top of it. What they were going to need to do, because they were going to, they're going to dig down and create some usable space on two floors, was to pour foundation. However, when they started digging around there, they found out that the columns, those four columns, that essentially what you see is kind of sitting on a little bit of a concrete slab, below it, it is just basically rock and fill. So, I mean, it survived a hundred and some odd years, but the contractor just didn't feel comfortable, you know, kind of digging that around that. So what they did, they went back, they went back, they looked at it, and what the, what the trustee, what the trustees authorized was adding two hundred thousand dollars back into the budget, which will enable them to kind of take that down, pour in the, the foundation, and still build around it. What they did is they authorized the spending, they're going to go back and just see if that, they can do it for that two hundred thousand. If they can, they'll still be under budget and create a really good usable space. If, if it looks like it's going to be significantly more than that, they may, they may potentially scrap it. But they did authorize the spending of that, of those funds. One thing that I was really impressed, you know, obviously we've both been paying attention to the, to the library stuff for a long time, but this is the, the first building committee I actually sat in on with the building project manager, the architect, and all the players. I'm really, really impressed with the quality of the people, both from the building committee that the library has, but also the building project manager. They're really paying attention to the details in terms of trying to cut down on costs, really on top of all, you know, kind of all the issues. So I feel, you know, obviously with any new project that's going to cost fifteen million dollars, you're never really sure what you're going to find. I feel that this, there's the right team assembled here. So that was, you know, comforting, at least I know my attending in the first meeting. So, you know, obviously more on that will evolve next month. I'll probably have some more bids in there, figure out if they're going to be able to actually do this innovation lab.
Does, does that affect the parking pattern that was planned for the front?
No, no.
Okay.
No, it's still going to keep, keep that. Essentially what they're doing is they're going to, they're going to glass in that, that front and.
But did, did the cars go between the columns in the building before?
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, in front, okay.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, they're still going to do that kind of circular driveway. The other thing I wanted to report on, also another really feel-good thing, is Friday night, I attended the thirtieth anniversary of Understanding Disabilities.
Oh, great.
Event. You know, those, those guys do a tremendous job in expand, in sort of expanding the understanding of living with disabilities. They, they're planning a whole new curriculum. They're on a, a new fundraising effort where they're trying to basically recruit partners who will basically fund the organization going forward. There was a great speaker that they had, Molly Sullivan Slaney, who was a former Olympic fencer, representing the United States, gave a speech. She was severely dyslexic growing up, had no self-confidence until sort of a coach found her in fencing, and she just gave a tremendously inspiring talk about what it was like for her to kind of get that confidence and, and make the United States Olympic team. They're doing a tremendous job. They're, they're in every school, they're expanding the curriculum, and I know a lot of people here support U.D., but they had their thirtieth anniversary, it was a real good, feel-good.
Tell us some, Julia Blank would be proud of them, if she were still with us. Kevin?
I have a couple of reports out, well, on, one, I attended a site visit for the new proposed Forty-B project down on Lincoln and, is that Prescott?
Prescott.
Yep. I, I don't want to take up too much of time, because we're going to be discussing it later on tonight, though, but I can certainly talk about that, at that, at that portion of the, of the meeting. And the same thing as well as I attended the last EDC meeting as well, too. So I know they're going to be, they're going to see us before tonight, so in essence of a, of a long night here, I'll save time and not do it twice, and do it when, when it comes up.
Okay, I'll be brief. I attended a breakfast meeting with John Halsey, Bob, superintendent of schools, and two school committee members, Jesse Wilson. We talked about a potential solar project in Reading, which will also be the subject of an agenda item later this evening, I believe, so I'll defer to that point. So at this point in time, we have the certificate of recognition for Eagle Scout Duncan Dietz. Let me just, uh.
Do you want to do a public comment?
I'm sorry, I skipped over that. Is there any public comment on a, any item not on the agenda tonight? And do you want to?
If I could just ask everyone to sign in, there's a sign-in in the corner as you leave, if you could sign in.
Sorry about that. Do you have a brief report at this time?
If you don't mind, a couple of things really fast.
Sure.
I was at an emergency management meeting today in Wakefield with nineteen other communities. We're a group of twenty. So John Halsey's comment earlier about the health region, fire, police, health, and this emergency management group all have different groups that are different cities and towns. It's completely insane. And we had a presentation today from a woman at the state in charge of emergency management in public health. She said the same thing. She said, you know, yet another group that's not correlated to anything else. But I have to say, the group of twenty that met in Wakefield is highly organized. As is often the case, Reading was represented by nine people. Most cities and towns send one or two. So again, the cities and towns look to Reading to figure out how to deal with a crisis if there's a regional one. You know, led by Greg Burns, we really do have a very strong team and a very strong presence. I wanted to thank very much the Garden Club this weekend at an event that I know a couple of selectmen were able to get to. They had their plant sale out on the common. And thanks to Jesse over there on the new group called the Cultural Connection Reading, that has loosely formed a bunch of area cultural groups were out on the common. We didn't have the music, because they were afraid it was going to rain, but we had all the artists, except for the watercolor film. That was really nice. I, I got a lot of compliments. I've received some very nice emails about it. The Garden Club has already signed up to do the same thing next year, since the library will probably still be under construction. They were thrilled. They said it's as good an event as they've had, and they sold out faster than usual. So it worked out really well. It's almost like we've been doing it, yeah, yes. It's almost like we've been doing it every year. I do want to also to follow on to Barry's comments about the library project. It is going well, knock on wood. Tomorrow night at seven o'clock down at the temporary library, there's a project update for the public, if the public wishes to attend. Quite often, the butters attend, and I'll agree with Barry's comments that the project management on this is very strong, and that also includes Joe Huggins from DPW. Measured by complaints by the neighborhood, it's a perfect project. I've received zero.
Seriously?
Just imagine that.
That's really good.
Yeah. That doesn't mean there aren't any, but I haven't received any.
Have they killed everybody in the neighborhood?
I wonder. You know, some neighbors are still walking in there trying to return books. They've had to put up a sign saying the library's closed. But really, from a public relations and a neighborhood impact standpoint, the heavy construction has not yet gone on, but the demo was, was pretty intense. It's being very well managed, and communication, more importantly, is, is working very well.
That's good.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, now the time has come to recognize Eagle Scout Duncan Dietz. Duck, would you like to stand up and maybe introduce the members of your family? See, your mom is here.
My mom is here.
Okay. Okay, anybody else you want to introduce?
We're, we're split duty based.
Okay.
With my son and my husband.
Gotcha, yep, no problem. I'm going to read this certificate. Barry, if you want to offer a few comments afterwards. This certificate is hereby, is a certificate of recognition awarded to Duncan Dietz in recognition of his achieving the Eagle Scout Award for his service project in which he worked with the Beverly Bootstraps Food Pantry in Beverly, Emmaus House in Havrell, and Lazarus House in Lawrence. I'm very familiar with them, to create three hundred personal hygiene kits for the homeless clients of these three charities. Given this nineteenth day of May two thousand fifteen by the Board of Selectmen. Barry, do you want to add any comments?
We'll be here all night. If we go through the list of this last accomplishment, I'm incredibly impressed. Duncan passed his Eagle Board of Review in November, and is going to be getting, going through the Court of Honor on May thirty-first, where I'll be presenting him officially his, 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 his award. Duncan is a senior at Saint John's Prep, and is going to graduate, actually, actually, you graduated.
He did, he did.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Congratulations.
So what are you doing? You got to, get a, get a job. But in addition to being an Eagle Scout, Duncan was a saber captain in the varsity fencing team, a member of the campus ministry, student advisory committee, member of the mock trial team, and in his spare time was an officer of the philosophy club, and chair of the Spire Society, which assists the Office of Admissions. Is a member of the National Honors Society and German Language National Honors Society, and he plays the French horn in the Saint John's Prep Concert, Concert Band. He's an altar server, a eucharist minister at Saint Agnes, and in the fall is going to be going to State University of New York at Binghamton on a pre-law track. I want to also say something, too, one of his accomplishments this year, for the first time, and I hope will be many times, Duncan voted for the first time. And showed up to the polls in a jacket and a top. That's not a requirement. And also, just a little bit about, a little bit about his project. You know, as, as Dan mentioned, he worked creating personal hygiene kits for, for the homeless. But the way he did it, too, is that he engaged with folks from the parish, from the Reading Police Department, and advertised, and also engaged a help from the rest of his troop, and he created these three hundred kits, which contain items such as comb, shampoo, soap, toothpaste, toothbrushes, floss, deodorant. And his fundraising was so successful that he was able to donate excess supplies and make monetary contributions to these organizations. So that is incredible. I feel really comfortable knowing that the future of the country is in good hands with, with people like, like Duncan. You know, those of us who play sports, we see once in a while, we see athletes that are just God-given talent. Most of them, most of all of us, we don't have that God-given talent, we have to learn these things. And leadership is a learned, is a learned skill. And the work that you've done as an Eagle Scout in your community, that's a learned skill. And hopefully that you'll translate to other people in the community. And it's something that Angela and Jeff, you should feel really proud of the work that Duncan's done. And we're proud of you in Reading for all the work that you've done here, and we wish you a lot of, a lot of success and benefit, and come back with meaningful help. Thank you.
Being a member of the German Club, you'll appreciate this. Auske Zeichenet. Want to translate? It's excellent, okay. Nicely done. John, do you have any?
As I said, welcome to the Brotherhood. You'll be an Eagle Scout all of your life, and it will take you in places that you'll just not believe. It's a, it's a great accomplishment, but the future of what you've accomplished is all in front of you, not behind you.
Let's read the motion formally, and then we will do that.
Move that the Board of Selectmen award a certificate of recognition to Duncan Dietz in recognition of his achieving the Eagle Scout Award.
Is that second? Discussion, hold on, favor? Five-zero. Okay, it's just going to be presented now? Okay, come on up, yeah.
Congratulations.
I could tell you.
I did not know that. Closer to your heart.
Is that why?
Right.
Okay. Interesting.
He knew right away.
He knew right away, yes.
Hey, thanks again, guys. Okay. Go ahead. Why don't you come back here, we'll get a picture of that. Two Republicans.
In front of the flag, that's a good job.
That's a good job. Everybody get in, or just?
Want to follow in here?
Yes, of course.
Take two for good measure.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, I am now pleased to welcome back for return engagement the RMHS Robotics Team. And if we could have one of the leaders come up and be introduced, a couple of the, the team leads, who would like to be the spokesperson?
Hi, I'm Caitlin Maloney.
Hi, Caitlin.
I came last time, so maybe you know me. I'm a senior at the high school, and I'm one of the co-presidents. So our team, we have Polly, Alex, Jeff, Tim, James, Jack, Paul, Tim, Paul. We're on the spot. Jared, Jacob, Jake, Andrew, and Shar. So I just want to personally thank you as one of the seniors for supporting us through this past year with both fundraising for the robot and getting word out for our competition. Thank you, and now on to our presentation team.
Welcome, sure. Take it away.
So that's Caitlin, someone else you need to introduce. I'm Tim Fitzgerald, I'm a junior on the team, and my, this is my second year.
My name's Alex, I'm a junior at the high school, and this is my first team.
I'm Polly, I'm a junior on the team, this is my third year, and I'm the team's fundraising team.
I'm Jeff, this is my second year on the team, and I'm a junior as well.
All right, so one other person we have is our mission statement. And one of the things that we try to do as a team is we try to promote the STEM initiatives within like our group with either business and the technology that we use. And we also try to collaborate with our mentors and other FRC teams to help gain life skills that will help us outside of school. So many of you have probably seen this slide before. This is about, first, which is the organization, which is in charge of all this. They have the four levels, and in Reading we have two of levels, which is the FLL team, which is the first, Leo Lee, and the FRC team, and, we're obviously the FRC team. And that's kind of like, I don't know, what we do at college is the varsity sport for the mind. It helps us just like, yeah, it trains our minds to be like that. But our team has grown over the past three years, since we started in two thousand thirteen. It almost doubled every season that we've had it. Right now, we have forty-seven students. Two of those students are actually juniors from Parker. They've signed up, Jack and Thompson, both from Parker, and they've actually been a great help for our team. Can't wait to officially have them on the team next year as high schoolers. And another thing, we have fifteen mentors, which are all professionals and like leaders that help us throughout the thing, and they're great help in not just like telling us what to do, but leading us so we can, are able to do that ourselves one day. And our team aspects are just little categories on what we can do inside the team. And so we have seven different categories, and this allows the kids to be able to choose what they want to be focused on. And this doesn't just include working on the robot, it also includes business team and other technological things that you can do outside the robot. For example, I'm on the website team, and so that's on the business side. And I barely ever touch the robot, but I also get experience of stuff that I want to do and I'll want to go into later on.
So besides our team structure, which was actually new this year, one of the biggest changes that our team had was moving into our new shop space, which is right next to the superintendent's office in the high school. So that was really great, and it's also to a nice bigger space. And it actually allowed us to receive a CNC machine, which was donated to us from the Northeastern University team, and it's worth about thirty-five thousand dollars, which is really awesome. And we're able to machine really cool parts, such as our logo, which we actually carved out. This is our test of the CNC machine. So you can take a look at that. We filed a share of points now. So a lot of our team focus this year was to improve the business side of our team. So as Alex talked about, a lot of our team is not just about building a robot, but also has a lot of opportunities to work on fundraising and media. So we actually, for the first time this year, created a business plan for the team, which. So we actually, for the first time this year, created a business plan for the team, which focused on our fundraising and outreach efforts. We also hosted our district event, which you guys helped us a lot with, and also a few of you came to and saw. So that was really fun for us. And we also tried to improve our social media outreach on our Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and website, and did a lot of other fundraisers and community events. So this is our fundraising for the year. This just shows kind of where we got our funding from. As you can see, a lot of our funding this year came from our district event, we made a lot of money off that. We also get a lot of our money from corporate sponsors by spending grants and doing presentations to them. And as you can see, we also spend a lot of money. So we spent a lot this year getting things organized for our district event, and also of course putting the robot together. And as you might notice, there is a slight gap in between what we raised this year and what we spent. And that was because even though we qualified to attend the world championship in St. Louis this year, we actually decided to stay at home, and we're going to reinvest some of that money in the future of the team and try to buy new tools and equipment.
What do you think your steady-state budget needs to be going forward? It's kinda bouncing around there, where do you think you need to be?
This year we had it at, I think it was forty-nine thousand. And we actually did exceed that, so depending on what we can buy with the extra money this year, we might lower it a little bit, about forty-five thousand.
What do you think you need to run the program, forty to forty-five grand a year?
Yeah.
Does that include a trip? Cause you only spent thirty-six thousand.
That includes, so that includes entry fees for both of our district events that we attend. So we do two district events, and then if we qualify for the district championship, which we have the past two years, that would also cover that entry fees and travel for that.
What do you think the maximum capacity of the program is in terms of participants?
I wouldn't say we have a maximum capacity because of our schedule, which we'll talk about a little later. We do a lot, a lot of flexibility, so there are kids just coming and going every night. So it's very easy to have, you know, a large amount of people, as long as they're not all there on the same night, of course, as Carol fit everyone into our shop.
So is forty-seven sixty-one the name of your friend there?
Yeah, no, actually her name is Patricia.
Okay.
Portally, it's Patricia. Forty-seven sixty-one is actually our team number, so every team that can use that number.
Well, then that's hence the rocket.
We're trying to like rearrange the letter, they wouldn't let us do that.
So if we, we have Patricia outside on a nice expansive lot, what would we be seeing right now? If you could.
We'll talk about that a little later.
Can you? Okay.
We're gonna try to do it now.
Okay.
We're actually gonna get into that.
Excellent.
Right about now, actually. So this year's challenge, it was a bit different than previous years, but we'll talk about that now. So we have these totes, which about yay big. And you stack them up to score points. And then if you put an industrial-sized trash can on top, you get extra, like triple the points. So our team's focus was to put the caps on them, but that'll be next. So our robot, which is right there, I don't know if you can see it.
Yeah, they can pivot.
So it was actually quite interesting this year. For the first time, we added our entire robot, which is the picture on the left. And so we used skills from our school using the Intro to Engineering and Design class. And those kids that took that class actually built that three D model, and we used that to translate into traffic right there. And so it was really interesting to actually get the, use skills from what we were taught in an application that turned into a real thing. And so, I don't know if you've heard, but we actually hosted a district.
We did.
We've mentioned it a few times. But it was the first year, and first and us, we both consider it a huge success. We had a huge crowd come in and see what our team does and the whole community, the first community does. And forty teams participated, so there was a lot of people there. And we actually had judges from Reading. We had Dr. Doherty, who's the superintendent of schools, I don't know if you know him. And we also had the new principal at RMHS, Mr. Adam Barker. And they were great judges, and I think it was a great experience for them to actually see what we do. And yeah, we brought in everybody from the community to see that. If you guys didn't get a chance, Bob and I went for maybe an hour. It's kind of a combination between a WWF match. From a Buster's and a small Tupperware. This is the most bizarre thing I've ever seen. They first started the best audiovisual equipment I've seen inside of a school bar. Simulcast to at least one other spot, I think there may be a couple, but just remarkable. The most confusing part of the evening is the teams actually throw objects into the playing field. We didn't figure that part out until just tonight. They lay the playing field out, which made perfect sense, but then halfway through, people would throw anything onto the field to play, which turned out to be part of the game, so.
Sounds perfect for us.
Yeah. And even though the first competition was a great success, our team also had a stellar season this year. As it was mentioned before, we qualified for the world championships. And we were at three events, two of them were districts, one of them was our own. So that was an interesting experience, cause I'm usually with the robot, but with the competition going on, I actually volunteered and helped set up the field every time. So that was a different perspective.
Was she lonesome?
But so in our district, we ranked eleventh, and actually ended up an Alliance captain. And that's a great big deal, because we get to choose two partners and compete in an elimination round. And we actually got some semifinals. We were so close, but at the last second, one of the stacks fell and the points got deducted. So we were almost finalists. Some issue for next year. But yeah, that's something to shoot for. And so at both districts that we went to, we actually won the entrepreneurship award, which was a huge thing for our business team, which we really got organized this year. And we were the only first team in New England to win the entrepreneurship award at both the districts we went to. So it was a great job for our business team this year. And then through that, we'll move on to the Rhode Island District, where we ranked seventeenth. And we again qualified for the semifinals, or the elimination rounds, and we were a quarterfinalist this time. And that, through those, we qualified for the New England Championship again. And we were among the sixty best teams in New England.
How do they determine the winner of the entrepreneurship award? What's that based on?
So we propose a business plan every year, or you can. And our business team proposed a really good one. But they take all the business plans from all the teams that participated in the events, and basically they read through them and see which one was the best.
Ganged together, yeah.
The criteria that I have.
And I have a panel of judges who decide and vote on them.
Very good.
You see, to me, that, that's one of the bigger accomplishments, is that, is that award. That's, that's your, that's your, your life's moving forward kind of thing. You know, this is how it's gonna be out in the real world. That type of thing, that's, that's huge that you've won those awards at both districts, it's great.
Yeah, we're really proud of our business team.
Yeah, you should be, yeah.
So what comes next? We have a lot of things planned in our future, we're planning on doing back to the Reading community, and we're, you know, focusing on the elementary and middle schools. We want to appeal to more, more to them, especially girls, cause there's not many girls in the science programs. So we have a few of our girls here.
We're losing one of them.
So we're hoping to get more girls in the future. And we also are planning on getting team workshops for preseason. So the preseason is where we do most of our planning, like teach kids how to do things. So during the build season, they know what to do, and they tend to find their niche there, like what they plan on working on throughout the season. So as you see, we're pretty involved in our community. We've done many events through past and hopefully in the future. So some of the things that we have planning on doing sometime in the near future, Parker Middle School Assembly. So this is to appeal more to the middle school students who want to become junior members, or maybe think about joining the team when they reach high school.
Kind of like the minor leagues.
Yeah. And so we, our goal is to create a science expo for middle school, elementary school students who do STEM things and want to show off their work. So there's a lot of like cool projects that kids do, but they don't have a chance to show anyone it, and this is their chance. So we're planning on hosting it sometime in November, and we're planning on working on the vacation. So these are the events that we're planning on doing this year, for the rest of this year, I guess. And as you see, we have some assemblies in some middle schools. And also, if you wanna find us more places, we have the Reading Friends and Family Day and the Street Fair that you can find us. And then, any questions?
Where's Patricia's brother and sister? I mean, what happened to the ancestors? Don't tell me, don't tell me you turned them into Patricia. Oh no.
One, one of them is getting reassembled soon, hopefully.
And they had to stay at home, cause they were tired.
You might wanna go visit the Reading Rotary Club again, cause that's actually how you ended up here. Not tonight, but you know, some time ago. And that was a great visit that you had there, and then I think there's a lot of people in that club that would be very interested in how you've progressed, you know, since the last time you visited. Cause you know, it's a great story, and what you've done has just been spectacular since that time. Cause I think that was late last year you visited there.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, it was in December.
Yeah. And that was a great visit.
Yeah, that was.
Barry talked earlier about, about skill not being necessarily something that we're all born with. And it strikes me, this is a great environment for kids that have interest, but maybe not the right demonstrated familiarity with the subject matter. And you're obviously reaching out to younger and younger members of the team. So you've got a chance to bring people, not just for three or four years, but even potentially more. It's a tremendous asset and add-on to our educational experience for tomorrow's leaders in many ways.
And the part you're really maybe not gonna understand till you get out in the business world is how important it is that you're learning, you're learning the concept of teamwork at an early age. We didn't have anything like this many moons ago when I went to high school, it was all individual stuff.
Dinosaurs roaming the earth.
Who let him in? Software is built today in small teams using agile development. I mean, this is a perfect segue if you're going into many fields that involve teamwork together, so.
That's, that's the part I wanted to remark on, having seen the competition group along the year, and having just done the second round of college tours with my understudy. You guys have accomplished what colleges, hope parents believe they will accomplish for their children, and you've already done it. The big thing on college campuses now for these liberal arts is integrated education. Teachers that actually talk to each other, that actually work together. And there's some deliverable that involves more than one skill. No one of your accomplishments stands out so much as the way the group works together. Really, you'll find that to be the most useful skill as you go on, I think. As much as any single individual skill in the world here.
And actually, you do mirror the real world. In fact, actually maybe lead the real world in that, what I was really impressed with is the fact you actually had a business plan. And that you raised a significant amount of money. Now, all of us have participated, whether it be youth sports, or you know, the science club and everything. And the fundraising plan essentially is to stand outside to moolahs with a can. Whereas you guys actually came up with a plan. Now, that robot that you built was probably, will probably be obsolete, maybe already is obsolete, because the next robot that you're gonna build is gonna, you know, far outpace it. But the ability to kind of get the word out and raise money and do the funds, and raise the funds for it is really what's gonna lead it, because you know, the robot is great, but without all those other things, you can't build and promote the robot, so. And it also gives a chance for other kids, who may not be science inclined, but who might be entrepreneurial inclined, to, to really get involved with it. And really, you'll be greater than the sum of the parts, so. Good job.
So we can do a demo of the robot right at the front?
Yeah, whatever. Awesome. As long as there's no selectmen harmed in the operation.
Have you ever seen the movie RoboCop?
Yes, yes. That's what I had in mind, actually. Got nine-one-one on my speed dial here. There we go. Sound mixer. Tune holesy out, he's talking too much.
Come on in, Dave, come on in, we're learning to live without electricity.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm actually the other co-president on the technical side of things. My name's Drak Patel, I'm a senior at the high school. So like they said before in the presentation, the goal of the game is mostly to stack totes and put those cans on top of the totes to score points. We had an on-field loading station, just like our little mock-up right here, that we use to load in those totes. So we designed a robot around that, to load totes through that chute into the robot. We have conveyor belts on the robot to move those totes through the robot. And we have an elevator that moves the totes up and down at different levels. So it's not a one future of the robot, can we have a volunteer?
I'll do it.
Hey.
When we do it? Where do you need me?
Take Oscar the grouch out.
Alright, so what I'm gonna need you to do.
Is not break it?
Well, that's it. So move the elevator up and down, and move the conveyor belts in and out, so that we load in totes through that chute into the robot, stack up inside the robot, and we're ready to put them up to the stack. All you gotta do is press and hold that button right there.
Alright. For each one?
Just hold it, press and hold it until it's hard to start.
Do I need to practice right?
Yeah, one shot, one shot. It's alright, don't worry. Press and hold it tough, the doggy go fat.
Do I have to do now?
Go ahead. I didn't tell you if you have to be loading the totes. Keep holding.
It's like the baggage handler.
That's it, you want to go?
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you.
And that's how your luggage gets to the plane. Alright, so now I'll have Jake, our operator, put those totes onto that other tote on the floor, and we're gonna stack. There we go.
Oh, nice. Now the piece there is a stance.
So normally in the game, you get the most points by stacking the totes, six totes high, but our students do a bit well, so we're not gonna try that. So the next thing we're gonna show you is moving that can and putting it on top of that stack. So can we have another volunteer?
Sure.
Alright, and we can prove it.
We have the tape, that's right.
So I need you to activate that piston right there, move that hook up, spinning that can inside the robot, and move that conveyor belt.
No problem.
It's just like baseball, Joe.
All you gotta do is press that button with a lazy button, you gotta press.
The lazy button.
There you go.
Who said I wasn't?
Good job, thank you very much. So, the two operations I have volunteers perform are examples of automation that we put into the robot. We realized that a big part of this game, being able to play it efficiently and fast, because we have a limited amount of time, two minutes and thirty seconds per map. Is to pre-program all these buttons, so you're just gonna press it once and it does everything for you. Doing that by hand would just take forever. So, that helped us play the game really well, and we used multiple sensors, we learned a lot of new things from this game. So, we'll have Jake top that stack with the can, and finally score the points that we wanted to match. So, we do a little feature that, we can't demonstrate because of the spacing, but, uh, if you guys wanna come over and check it out, we have this little cone hanging off the side of the robot, I don't know if you can see it.
Yep.
That's the missile.
So, we have the, this mechanism is actually 3D printed by one of our sponsors, and designed by one of our students on the team using CAD on a computer. And Jake can actuate it, it has a motor that spins up these little fingers. So, what we use this for is, we realized between competitions, even though the build season's over, when we're building the robot, we can still modify the robot. Information never stops, you always find ways to improve. So, we realized that to play the game really well, we have to be able to pick up these cans when they're tipped over on their side. So, we made this grabber and such that we stick the cone inside the top of the can.
Through the hole.
Through the hole. We actually make those fingers to open it. We lift the elevator up, and this can, this cone possibly falls down like such. And then we can just drop the can standing straight up.
Alright.
There we go.
Awesome.
How many, how many of these designs are kind of, this, the macro you talked about earlier with all the steps, how many of those are kind of invented, the concepts were invented here, or the little expanding hands on, is that developed here?
Developed, what do you mean, like, um, as in developed works?
Your idea, this group's idea.
Oh, this was all our group's idea, everything that was created on this robot was our idea. We do share some ideas with other teams, and there are basic concepts that you share. That's a big part about first is, you can create an idea, you can create a unique idea, it's awesome if you share it with other teams, and you can expand on it, grow on. A lot of these concepts right now are ones that our team created, and that we will be sharing with other teams.
Great.
Cool. Really cool.
Any other questions, Rick?
Okay, no.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for the demonstration, and just, just as luck told you. Okay. Let's, uh, we'll take about a five-minute recess, feel free to take pictures, et cetera.
Have we taken a quick picture with all of you?
Sure, yeah.
How about the robot?
Yeah, the robot, of course. Okay, I gotta get out front?
Yeah.
Let's see, where you gonna take it, which angle are you taking from? Does this work?
Um.
From the right here? Okay. Okay, that works. Alright.
Yeah.
Good? Come on, get in here. Back it all out. Who's taller? Shark eyes up front.
I've got a couple scouts over here, you guys wanna stand up?
Yeah, just come on over here.
Get your everybody's rock, pretend you like rock. Thank you, guys.
Alright.
We got our Facebook page, it's gonna be posted later. Alright, guys, everyone needs to sign in if you're covered.
Yep, please.
Alright.
Mike, Mike.
That'll be back.
You like it? Come find us in present family.
Okay.
It was at the school committee last night, I just turned the calendar, I said, I feel like I can just quit right now as a grown-up and let them take over.
Seriously?
Really?
It's so impressive.
Yeah. And, um, any number of them can stand up and supplement and do what we saw, which, me as a kid.
Absolutely not. That's, the, the, it's really such a great book, and it's only, it's only as good as the enthusiasm these kids show, which is just unbelievable.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, have a good night, thank you, great job.
Yeah, exactly, let's just move to a journal.
But we have an illegal meeting anyway, I mean.
What's that?
We have an illegal meeting.
Only according to one person.
Yeah, that was, I'd love to see the film at eleven on that one.
Jeez. You'd have loved to have seen the expression on Matt's, Matt Cornell's face. I went, he said, will you authorize that? I said, I didn't know anything about it, he says, it's the last time it's gonna happen.
I love that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, you're gonna send me his resume so I could call him up?
Oh, that's right.
When you think of it, I like to get together.
Okay, I will, gotta write that down, I don't remember.
That was so much fun, I love that.
That was easily the best, one of the best meetings we've had.
It's not even, there's not even, it's not even close.
Babe, just keep coming back and meetings.
We can get him to come every two weeks, it'd be good for me. I'm loving it also, I'm on the Boy Scouts robotics.
Last night.
Getting for the cycle, huh?
The school just kinda skipped right.
Walk them over, Eddie, that's it. Alright.
You know what I forgot?
What?
I'll do it next meeting, my report on the audit.
I thought that was you, okay, Dan, Dan Ensminger, how are you?
Hey, nice to meet you.
Great, welcome.
Hi, Julie, I'm John Halsey.
You're welcome. Yes. I saw, I saw you be assigned on TV, yes, I was watching, I was lurking.
We're a very easy group to get to know and work out.
You notice, it's like an initiation, they send a new person over.
This is huge, this is huge for a very skilled staff.
I think it's unbelievable.
Sorry, last night just.
What's that?
I congratulated Superintendent on his adept response on the Joshua Eaton principle, the two primary candidates backed out. So, he assigned, he got the Birch Metal Vice to step, step up and take the position. Pretty, pretty good turning on a dime. Now, they, of course, have to replace that position, that's it. Alright, let's reconvene. Okay, we're gonna pick up with the Citizens Advisory Board member report, David Mancuso, front and center. Uh, for those in the audience, the Citizens Advisory Board is, please, that's a good place. That is the selectmen's representation to the RMLD Board of Commissioners, each of the four towns has a member. One or more members, I think Wilmington has two members.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of a proportion to the power consumed by each town. And David is kind of our eyes and ears, takes our comments back to the, the board, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Appreciate the opportunity to address you all tonight. You know, there's an old adage in the entertainment business, never follow dogs for kids, never follow robots.
Sorry.
So, I, I don't think I can compete.
We tried to book Letterman, but he wasn't available yet, yeah.
He will be Thursday.
He will be.
So, just a, a couple of things, it's budget season, and so I thought it would be worth mentioning quickly that the, um, the CAB has approved a ten point five million dollar capex budget and an opex budget, which gives us about an eighty-six million dollar.
Capital and operating?
Capital and operating, yes. The Chairman Talbot and I were just talking, the capex budget has been approved by the Commissioners, they're gonna be looking at the operating expense budget soon. And so, um, it's really driven, the ten point five number is really driven, I think, by the organization's attempt to get much more, become much more proactive than they have been in the past. The feeling of the general manager's expressed to the CAB is that they have been doing a lot of things traditionally there in a very reactive basis, and that you're gonna try and get ahead of that curve. It makes sense, it's an investment, but when you start to look at things like grid security and, and reliability, there's some pretty good, sound investments that are gonna be made in, in, in really moving ourselves a little bit ahead of the, the curve for the, for the, the, um, for the company. The thing that I would mention about that is that the CAB has requested that moving forward, when we review budgets, we do the operating expense budget first, and the capital expense budget second. We asked about it this year, apparently it was just the way things sort of fell and were organized, but it sounds like that will be acceptable to the general manager, so that we can look at what kind of income do we have before we start looking at what kind of money we spend moving forward. Couple of notable things out of that review, keeping in mind that eighty-three or eighty-four percent of the budget in RMLD is really about keeping the lights on, literally. And then the smaller portion is about staff and, and, and operations. The important thing I wanted to point out is that load is declining. So, with efficiency and folks using less electricity, the very thing that's, that RMLD is selling, we are selling less of it. There's about a, a decline of one percent projected in terms of actual load for next year. Good on one hand, because we're using less electricity, obviously that leads to questions about the sustainability and the financial side of things, because all we have to sell right now is electricity. The ideas on the table for generating more revenue are, are starting to be discussed. There was some talk about the fact that we are in a very high-cost energy state, that RMLD has some of the lowest energy rates in, electricity rates in the Commonwealth. And that's an asset that the communities have the opportunity to sell as part of an economic development effort. That really, growing that load is one way to ensure that we can continue to provide some rate stability, and not necessarily have to get into a model where we're constantly having to raise rates. Although the general manager has warned that we're likely to see more rate increases just by the nature of the energy industry, the cost of energy that we're purchasing to redistribute, and then, uh, the, just the operations itself of RMLD. One of the other ideas which will be discussed is trying to take advantage of some of the broadband capabilities, the dark fiber that we have in the ground. Chairman Talbot and I were just talking about it a moment ago, trying to figure out whether or not there's some assets there that we can leverage on behalf of Reading and all of the other communities. That could be as simple as something that is really just community-based, where we try and, and bring benefit to the individual communities themselves. It could be something that might be commercialized. There are a few towns, there, I think there's about ten out of the three hundred and fifty-one towns that provide broadband and cable services to their community. Whether that's practical, we'll look at, there's some discussion on the CAB agenda tomorrow night about, about looking at a study or trying to dive into that, so we can learn a little bit more.
So, this is broadband that's part of the command and control center for the, running the power?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
So, that's, that's in place, and you're, you have some spare bandwidth?
Right, so it's, you know, of that fiber that's sitting in the ground that isn't being utilized, is there some way to either commercialize that or bring additional benefit to the town that might either reduce costs or increase revenue overall?
Does that, would that be turning it into a competing service?
That, that, it, it could, that would be the extreme of actually saying that you wanted to offer cable and broadband services and go out into the open market and compete. As I said, there's a couple, there's ten, ten or a dozen towns that do that.
Yeah.
In the Commonwealth, the circumstances are a little bit different in each of them. I think the, the CAB will be talking more about this tomorrow night, this is very preliminary discussions about, are there other alternative ways besides growing load, or in addition to growing load, to generate some revenue? Because it's a long-term concern. If we can't find ways to continue to generate revenue, then the burden is gonna increase on the ratepayer in order to be able to subsidize the, the expenses of the organization.
Is there any path for a, a, a town that joins a service area, or say the rest of Linfield, to petition the DTE to join the RMLD? Is, is, or is that kind of an impossible thing to think about?
You know, I, I won't claim to be an expert, I think there are some barriers.
Dave, if you know the answer, feel free to.
I have no idea. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some big challenges that would, we would likely face to do that, I mean, it's conceivable.
Equipment among others.
Y- yes, exactly.
You'd have to buy out some equipment, probably.
Yeah, exactly. You know, is it a possibility, it, yes, I think it is.
And they could benefit from your low rates, you could sell more power, et cetera.
It would just be an extreme situation where before the DPU, we'd have to, we'd have to build a pretty big case of why the, the town should move, and, and then we'd have to look at the expense side.
I think it's the same thing as about why it's harder now for municipal-like companies to actually even get started, that the for-profit-like companies are really put barriers, so they don't want any runoff from there.
Very political.
There's actually a statute in place that you, you can no longer start a municipal-like department.
And I would imagine poaching some, another, from the for-profit.
It would be a very interesting dynamic, let's put it that way.
Nothing happens by chance in the State House.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice case law.
So, yeah, it, it's, it would be an extreme, I think, kind of an extreme situation to, to chase that one down.
Easiest way to, to expand is to do more of what you're doing, though, to the point where we don't have half of Linfield, is it even in the realm of economic possibility that you'd buy out the, the other provider, the other half of the town?
I don't know, I'll bring that back to the organization and ask, it certainly is, it's certainly something to talk about. That's, that's a good bit of input that I can, I can poke around a little bit more on. One other thing that, out of the capital budget that I wanted to point out is, which I think is very positive, and this goes to the idea of what we can do as a municipal that others can't, is the idea of some planned distributed generation. The idea of putting a generator in place, it would be a two-megawatt generator, it would cost about two million dollars, and essentially its function would be to help us reduce peak power usage on the most heavily, um, uh, traffic days, essentially. So, uh, the way power, the way budgets are set, the way prices are set, is relative to the idea of how much capacity do we need to accomplish, to ensure that we have all the electricity we need, when we need it, on a hot summer day? Or on the holiday, you know, during the holiday season. So, there's really ten critical days where if we can suppress that peak, if we can actually lower the amount of energy we have to buy, we can lower the overall cost as well. So, it's, um, not something that everybody gets to do, we as a municipality can. And I think the CAB's feeling was, it brings some very tangible benefits, the way the numbers have played out, it's not big money, but by having the peaker, you know, industry, industry term peaker, we would be looking at saving ratepayers about five dollars a year, each ratepayer about five dollars a year. And that would continue, the investment's a, pretty much a one-time investment, this is capital equipment that will last a long, long time. Its shelf life is very long, it's only gonna run very few hours out of the year. And so, it's kind of a short-term investment to be able to have much longer-term gain, particularly as the capacity market is changing and the cost of energy is changing. So, it gives us a little more flexibility to control our own destiny.
Okay, Barry.
Dave, don't you, uh, uh, RMLD have the capacity right now to change the way the metering runs? So that if you use your energy on off-peak hours, it's less per kilowatt than let's say you do during, so you can basically kind of choose when you use your electricity?
Yeah.
And that wastes, obviously saves the ratepayer, individual ratepayer money, but also if everybody does it, then as a community, we're buying less, we're buying less of the more expensive energy.
So, that's the time.
Just available to commercial customers, I know it's been available for years, but.
Yeah, time, it's, that's time of use. So, yeah, so it's a, it's actually a, a billing plan, and you can agree to use off-peak energy. So, if you wanted to do your dishes and your laundry and all those, you know, those heavy electricity use app, uh, applications, and you did it off-peak, and I can't recall the hours, David, do you know what the?
Twelve noon to seven p.m.
Okay.
Is the on-peak.
Right.
So, if you shift here.
So if you shift your heavy users to the morning or evening, your, your dryer, your dishwasher, your, your heavy loads, you can save, you know, ten, twenty dollars a month.
You know, the flip side of that is you have...
Sure, could you just identify yourself for the audience?
Oh, sorry, uh, Tom Olala, I'm an engineer with Reading Municipal Light.
Thank you, Tom.
The, in fact, the important part, I think, for the consumer on those plans is that you really understand what your usage patterns are and you're willing to alter them. And so the folks at R M L D will actually talk the customer through what their actual usage has been to help them understand whether it's practical for them or not. So it might not be practical, for example, for a senior citizen who just isn't up late at night. It might not be practical for a large family that has to run laundry all day 'cause there's young kids, you know, but R M L D will actually go through the time and the effort to talk you through those plans to make sure you understand what the opportunity is.
I'm not sure a lot of people know that that's a dilemma. Um, and, and if it were, if the community sort of did it, and obviously it's not gonna be for everybody, but if enough people did, could that, you know, sort of shift, you know, reduce the overall costs of the company to provide electricity?
Um, it, it will reduce the, um, it will reduce the load. Here's the double-edged sword, right? Every time you reduce the load, you reduce the income.
Yeah.
And, and so, um, yes, that's great, you could, but that doesn't do anything to the operating side of the business. So it really is that balance between the two.
I mean, you're still using the same amount of power, it's just when you're using it.
Well, but that changes, right, but that does actually change the cost, right?
Don't, don't you buy on the spot market for the midday surges?
Uh, I'm not sure, we do buy on the spot market. I can't, I can't speak to exactly when, you know, the, the, that.
So that would save you money to avoid having to buy power that time.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's way more complex than we would wanna talk about tonight.
Yeah, I understand.
It has layers and layers and I would be happy to come in and it just helps me learn more. But the dilemma, going back to the budget, is this double-edged sword, right? As you reduce and suppress use of electricity, you sell less electricity, your fixed costs remain the same, how do you continue to run the entity?
It's like water, too.
Exactly.
You have the same problem here with water and sewer and...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not an easy...
Counterintuitive.
Yeah, it doesn't, it, it would not make any sense unless it was a regulated market and, and a crazy regulated market at that. Um, two, a couple other things real quick, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yep.
Um, there's an organizational study that was completed and a reliability study. Those are designed to help the general manager and staff determine whether or not the organization is structured right with the right staff, doing the right, with the right skill sets. Um, that report was given to the commission. Um, the C A B got a very, uh, brief slide presentation and has asked for copies of those reports so we can have a more detailed understanding of exactly what the recommendations are, um, both on the reliability side and on the organizational side. And then, um, really, the only other thing I was gonna mention, uh, sore subject for some, but I think the board should know if they're unaware of it, um, the truck sale, the capital equipment sale, um, was, uh, executed for twenty-six thousand dollars. So we've, we've made a little bit of money on those.
Right.
Any other questions?
David, any, uh, a few years ago, there was a discussion about the renewable energy credits. Where's, where's that been the last couple of cycles?
The solar recs?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think that mark, Tom could actually speak to that probably better than I can. I don't think that the market is really settled.
So, uh, the recs, uh, that we've had, uh, built up over the last few years primarily hydro-related.
Right.
Renewable energy credits and, and those that we purchased through the Green Choice program. So those are, you know, where I was getting new ones and they're cycling through at the way we have over the last past few years. So every quarter or every year, we sell those as they become due or passed to.
So we're not absorbing or retiring them or just a fraction due to the Green Choice program, I suppose, yep?
I'm, I'm sorry.
We're primarily selling, like, three, some that get retired, but mostly we're sold and that money is pulled back into the, uh...
There's another set of recs that are out there that are being discussed, which are the solar recs, which have to do with, specifically with photovoltaic, and, and that's a market that we're not quite sure about yet.
Uh, final question maybe from the board, any? Uh, I have a question of you. How can we help the C A B and you specifically do your job?
Um, you know, the, the, that's a great...
Are we meeting most frequently enough, you think?
Well, I, I think, um, I think the flow of information is great. I, um, I think if we can continue to do that through the C A B, the most, as, as an individual, the most , uh, important thing for me, because I can selfishly represent just Reading.
Yes.
Um, that's my job. Um, and so, uh, the more I can understand about what this board wants and what the community wants, the more I can advocate specifically for Reading, um, as opposed to the burden the commissioner share, which is to represent all of the ratepayers.
Right.
So the more I know, the better I can do the job for you.
Keep the lights on.
Yeah.
And by the way, they did a great job this winter.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
The reliability is, continues to be outstanding.
Yeah, they're making a big investment and making it even better and so...
I've been watching them out in the trees there. I see you have a new, uh, arborist?
Yeah, new tree cutting program. It's, it's actually yielding some pretty positive results. It's silly little things like that can make a big difference, right?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Talbot, thank you too.
Thank you, David.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda, solar opportunities, I guess that would be Gene and Jesse and anyone else on the team gonna speak? Could you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, Tom, but also.
Okay, we have Tom again. Hello again.
So this, um, conversation is a follow-up from a few weeks ago. If you recall, we had a member from the Climate Advisory Committee sort of introduced the idea about, uh, community shared solar. So Tom is here, he's with R M L D, he's gonna go into a little bit more detail. I know you had a lot of questions, um, about that initial thought, um, and we're really excited to, to think about this opportunity and I'm just gonna give it to Tom to sort of go into a little bit more detail and how we can move forward on a project like this.
Thank you, Jesse. Uh, my name's Tom Olala. I, my title is Integrated Resource Engineer at, uh, R M L D. I'm, uh, relatively new there, especially by R M L D standards. I've been, just hitting my first year anniversary now where the typical folks are twenty, thirty year people. So it's very exciting, there's a lot going on. As Dave mentioned earlier, there's a number of initiatives that we're starting, um, taking on, so that's exciting but challenging with a small organization. So it's, uh, it's definitely, uh, in the positive direction to keep our reliability up and keep our rates from rising more than, than they have to. There's a lot of pressures from the external market and the external world, um, that are, are really pushing that, the envelope on, uh, cost, et cetera. So there's a number of programs going on. I could spend all night talking about all of them, but I wanna focus tonight on, uh, a new concept that we're just exploring now. This, uh, program is not available. It's called Community Shared Solar. So tonight I wanna focus on explaining what that is and what it could possibly do for R M L D, for the town of Reading and for all of our, uh, our customers. Um, the current status of the program is we put together an ad hoc team, a multi-disciplinary team. Uh, I represent R M L D. We have a number of folks from the, uh, Reading Climate Advisory Committee. Uh, we have, uh, some citizens from North Reading as well as from the, the Town of Reading office. Jesse and, and Bob has, has helped out, sat in on a few meetings. So, uh, we're really exploring the options on what, uh, what this program could do for, for all of us. So with that, I can, uh, go through the presentation. Um, just the, uh, the main image you see here is an artist's rendering of, um, uh, the, our primary, uh, proposed site on where this, uh, array could be is at Reading High School. So this is what it could look like if we constructed this project at Reading High School with a combination of rooftop solar as well as solar canopy or carport type arrangement.
And that's what we see on the right here.
That's, the, the main picture.
Those are actually panels that are built out over the existing park section.
Correct, so, yeah, it's essentially putting a, a small, uh, roof section over, uh, the, the parking area. So I'll get into that, but I just wanna explain where that picture came from. So, uh, what is the community shared solar? It's really a, a win-win part, partnership between four entities. A private developer, municipal utility, the town, and the end-users. Everybody wins some benefit out of this program. It's, it's a rare opportunity that, uh, everyone gets a, a little piece of the pie and, and it's something that we're very excited about. It's a concept that's, uh, been, uh, around for, uh, several years in other parts of the country. It's still relatively new in Massachusetts and New England, but, uh, it's something that the R M L D feels, uh, is, is a positive thing. So we're exploring it. Again, it's not available right now, but we're putting together the nuts and bolts on how the program could work, specifically what the cost would be and what the benefits and how it would work. So let me go through just the basics on that. Um, uh, the, uh, the key advantage and why it's advantageous for us to have a private developer involved in the process is that they could capture the substantial federal and state tax incentives and depreciation benefits that we as municipals couldn't, cannot appreciate. Uh, when a private developer, uh, invest capital to buy a large solar system, they get thirty percent off the top that the feds paid for in the investment tax credit. That, um, situation ends at the end of, uh, next year, two thousand and sixteen. So you're, you're, that's one of the reasons why you're seeing so much solar development going on in, in Massachusetts and around the country right now and, and into next year. So, um, it's also one reason why, you know, sort of time is of the essence. The more we can take advantage of this, this year and next year, the better off we would be.
So let me understand, that's a one-time credit the developer gets? It's not amortized over some period?
It's upfront, it's upfront, the thirty percent tax credit. So you have to have a, you have to be a for-profit entity to take the credit against. Um, Massachusetts D O E R, Department of Energy Resources, has developed this, uh, community shared, uh, concept as, uh, one of their primary means to help accelerate the development, uh, and deployment of solar to the approximately eighty percent of the population don't have a, uh, a roof that's adequate to put solar panels on their own home. Either they're renters or they have a house, but it's shaded. So it just, doesn't make a lot of sense to cull your trees down so you can, uh, benefit from solar. It's not all that green on, on the overall. So, um, the, uh, D O E R's been very supportive of this and we're working closely with them to roll out the plan. Um, how would it work? Um, it's, uh, a lot of moving parts with, you know, four or five different entities involved, but everybody really has some benefit to it and, and plays an important role. The, uh, the C S S vendor or the private developer who's, uh, you know, uh, a, a major part of the core of the system, they come up with the financing for the project. So they have either finance, capital resources of their own, or they have partners to do that. They coordinate the engineering, design, procurement, construction, owning and operating of the system. So it's not R M L D that's buying the system and, you know, that we have to hire people to run the plan and do all this. That's coordinated, we're, we, we supervise it and we write the spec and we make sure it's doing what they say, but the, the vendor, the developer builds and operates the system. R M L D oversees the system specs and makes sure it's, uh, coordinated with the grid. Um, we also help on the marketing side to, uh, sell the, uh, solar shares, if you will, to the end-users, the customers, whether they're commercial or residential, uh, entities. Or in this case, it could be town buildings. If, um, if we put it at the high school, the high school could certainly, uh, acquire a fair amount of their own load from this array. Um, the, uh...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So I'm assuming that the, the front-end company, the for-profit company?
Right.
Manages the, the maintenance and repair and, you know, and ongoing replacement as necessary, is that right?
Correct.
And so how do they bond themselves?
Um, that would be, uh, built into the, into the system, you know, the program cost, you know, it's, these are typically fifteen or twenty-year programs, so those, uh, operation and maintenance, uh, expenses get, get factored into it.
So, so the, I guess the question I have is that, you know, we've seen a lot of energy, you know, energy companies not making.
Yep.
Um, and so when these things go up, I mean, I, I love the concept, but once they're up, they're up.
Right.
And so is there a performance bonding that goes on in the market?
One concept that we could incorporate into that is that because R M L D is a partner into it, we could act, act as a backstop to them. That if, worst case, they went out of business, we could, uh, take title to the equipment and manage the system from that point on.
We wouldn't lose the credits retrospectively, would we?
Would that?
Would we lose the credits that we got up, that developer got upfront?
No, the, no, the S rec credits would still go to whoever took title of, of the, uh...
And that's a done deal. Uh, irrespective whether or not the company survives?
I, I believe that, Sandra is with, uh, Blue Wave Capital who's been advising us on the program?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to respond. So typically how these contracts work out is that there is a bounding, um, collateral, uh, that's associated with it. I'm not the best at speaking to that, but, um, it provides for the long-term operation and maintenance of the facility as well as the commissioning once the facility has used, um, reached its end of life, which is typically somewhere between twenty, thirty, forty years.
Right.
Um, depending on the facility and what the appetite is for the community that we're working with at, at that point. Um, these, these would all be specified at a later date in net metering credit purchase agreement or power purchase agreement that we would execute with the R M L D, but it is a, a common component.
Uh, you're gonna put these potentially on the rooftops of municipal buildings. Uh, those roofs typically are replaced every ten, fifteen, twenty years. How does that work as part of this deal? Who, who is responsible for doing that? Uh, how do you do it underneath the solar array?
Yeah, so typically, there's a lot of vetting that goes on with regards to, um, where we'll put solar in advance of us actually installing the system. For a rooftop solar system, we'll take, first take a look at the age of the roof as well as the overall roof quality. Um, and, you know, if it's a reasonable roof, we'll work with an independent consultant to, uh, provide assurance that it's both structurally sound and the quality of the roof is sufficient to last the twenty-year lifespan of a solar P V system. Um, that, so that's one step that we go through. Now, if there are marginal roofs that we are interested in pursuing, we can discuss an accelerated roof replacement, but those are conversations that we would have, you know, once we actually evaluate the rooftop. The rooftop that we're looking at principally at, um, more, at the high school, um, is of the field house, which I understand is of good quality and was recently replaced.
Okay.
So it's not the main high school roof?
Oh, okay, that's, that's understanding of my part. Go ahead.
Just to clarify one thing, this, this is a very complex issue. Lots of moving parts, it's lots of pieces. Um, respectfully, when Reading gets involved in an issue like this, we don't particularly care how the market operates. Um, we've done that many times in finance. We've told the market how it should operate. So we'll study all the moving pieces, figure out who has what advantages. You know, the tax credits are a natural, uh, advantage. If our plastic carrier is an advantage, we'll use that. We'll figure something out.
Mm-hmm.
But even if there's a traditional path that people go down, that may be the right path, but we'll make a lot of effort to really study and understand it. And, um, Jane Parento at the Light Department fully understands, you know, working together and understanding. There's three people that have to end up being satisfied at the end of the day, pretty much equal.
Who does the structural, uh, computations, make sure the roof can bear the load?
Facilities and if we need to structural engineer them.
Okay, Barry.
Um, so the electricity that gets produced from this, do we have the ability, or is R M L D have the ability to sell it to other people, not just our users? Because otherwise we're just creating the same problem we had with Dave was talking about.
Yeah.
We're creating electricity.
But maybe during peak hours.
Right, we're creating electricity that we can't sell, that, that basically, you know, we're, we're adding to fixed costs and yet, um, you know, we're using less electricity. So how, you know, the, the electricity that gets produced, can we, is that a commodity for R M L D to use at its own discretion?
It's really become a compromise, that we have longer-term goals set by our commissioners that they want, you know, they're advocating a larger percentage of green and renewable, uh, power sources in our portfolio. So this is a way where we can do that and still minimize the cost or the premium. So the bottom line is, you're right, that what we, we'll end up paying for the, the electrons that come out of this system is gonna be a little bit higher than what we can buy from Quebec Hydro or whoever we're buying from now. But it's a, it's a reasonable compromise. So it's, you know, it's certainly doable and what, as long as it's a relatively small percentage of our overall portfolio, it's not really a, a major issue.
What's the disparity in the cost per kilowatt hour between solar and standard, uh, you know, gas-generated, uh, nuclear-generated? Now, is it three to one, two to one?
Well, I, I mean, it, it's, it's quite a range depending on the specific project, but as an example, we have, uh, private developers that are putting in solar, uh, systems in our territory now on, say, commercial buildings. And we, we've, uh, agreed to sign power purchase agreements. And we're buying the power from them for seven or eight cents a kilowatt hour.
Hmm.
But if you look at our overall portfolio that Jane manages.
Yep.
our average wholesale cost is five or six cents. So, that's the premium that solar is getting right now. So, it's not double, but it is, you know, it is higher. So, the more solar we put in our portfolio, our average cost does tend to go up.
Sunsets has been a hell of an increase in efficiency, because I.
Yeah, the hardware's been getting better, the prices have been coming down, so it's all positive, but it's, it's still not, you know, a no-brainer cheaper than what you're doing now.
Yeah.
Bob, there was an article this week in the Wall Street Journal on this very topic. Bob touched on it, there's so many moving parts, including subsidies for the operating side, that if you strip those away, it's closer to two or three to one. You throw them back in, you get the numbers closer to when our guests mentioned tonight. But I have two other concerns. I love the idea of money from the sky. This is the closest I can get to that. But if we wanna buy hydroelectric power, we generally don't erect a dam. And if we want windmill power, we generally don't erect a windmill. You can buy shares in companies that usually are located in areas that have more sunlight or a better angle of inclination to the sun. And we might look at that, this gets us into the operating side, which is different than anything else we do. This is actually in the manufacturing side of energy. So, you've got the disposal, you've got the long-term operations and maintenance.
Decommissioning potential.
And if tax, if all the moving parts change five years from now, you're committed, right?
That's true, but, but that is all funded and capitalized by the private developer that gets paid for out of these existing credits. So, so you're right, if you took the credits away, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be feasible. But it's important to note that it's not two million dollars that R M L D or the town has to raise. It's through the developer, and it's, it's spread out over the fifteen or twenty years that there's enough, you know, incentive that the developer make, their investors make money, and we, you know, make money as well. So, it's certainly a very attractive thing, that I think it's in our best interest to, you know, take advantage of while we can.
I'm making a slightly different point. Could you invest in a facility elsewhere in Massachusetts or elsewhere in the country and get all the same attendant benefits?
No, it has to be in your service territory. You can't buy solar power from Arizona and have it shipped here. That is just not.
Not shipped.
It's not an option. Well, even, even virtual net metering, which is what this system is, it has to be within the load zone, the territory where you are. So, National Grid, they're required by law to do net metering, but it has to be within their territory.
Yes, Dave.
Just, Dave, tell us, just one quick elaboration on the point that Mr. Reader was making, is that any power you buy from somewhere else, you're paying a transmission cost in addition to the cost of the electricity. Any power you generate in this district, you don't pay it either. And those, those costs are gonna go way up. So, just the cost of having it carried over the transmission system. So, that, that's why it's better to be local.
In fact, those charges are the ones that are going up most significantly as a percentage of our costs, the transmission and the capacity fees. They're really, you know, over the next three years are gonna go up significantly. So, we're, that's why we're putting things in place to mitigate that. Solar is one, distributed generation is another. Load shedding programs with our, our commercial customers, to work with them to cut back on load, to minimize those peaks. So, we're doing, you know, it's a multi-faceted approach. It's not all, all our eggs in one basket. But, you know, this is, you know, I'm urging everyone to consider this, that it's a, it's a good deal for R M L D, it's a good deal for the town, it's a good deal for the ratepayers.
Yeah, I wanna just hold questions and let you get through your presentation, because we're coming up on the witching hour.
My ten minutes are almost up?
Yeah. So, why don't you continue?
Okay. So, I think we, we made it through how it works. How does it benefit everybody? The town of Reading, as, as a payment for allowing us the system to use the site, whether it's the high school or a town building, there would be some type of lease payment as part of the project, as well as usually there's some form of pilot payment, or payment in reward taxes. So, so that's a positive economic advantage for the town. There's also the potential that, that the expenses at the high school, for example, if they participate in the program, some percentage of their power would be, be coming from the system. So, that could reduce the, their monthly electric bill based on that, depending on the overall performance of the system. The same way, and customers who signed up for the program could benefit by lower monthly bills, you know, on the system. And one of the big advantages of solar is it's a long-term hedge against rising prices. We've all been talking about electric rates in general are, are on a soft like this, going up two, three, five percent a year. Solar, it's definitely proven that these, this hardware can last easily fifteen, twenty, thirty years. And the fuel, if you will, is not going up. So, once that equipment is paid for, you can count on whatever that's, that's charging. Even if it's a premium right now at, at eight or nine cents, you know, five or ten years from now, that's gonna be a discount. So, there's gonna be a crossing there. So, it's a longer-term hedge against rising prices. So, that's a good reason to invest in, you know, many forms of solar.
Would you go into that in depth in a pro forma, once you get to that point?
Yes, exactly, and, you know, a big part of my presentation today is to give you a status on where we're at. So, a big part of our effort right now is working with Blue Wave, and the town, and others to put together a very detailed financial model that flushes this out. It says, okay, enough of your generalities, Tom, you know, exactly how much is this gonna cost? The town, how much is it gonna affect my bill? So, we'll have that information within the next month or so. So, that's sort of where we are. And, you know, we're gonna learn from other systems in other places in the country that have done this, as well as, you know, how is it different here? It's a little bit breaking new ground that there isn't another municipal in the state that has done a community solar program yet, so we're, we're breaking new ground. But I, to me, I think that's exciting, that the board and the organization is willing to support, you know, out-of-the-box thinking like that. So, it's refreshing, it's good. For R M L D, or for the R M L D customers, and this first phase of the program is working with Reading, and this array will be cited at a municipal, municipal site here within Reading. But it's available to R M L D customers in any of the towns. So, if you live in Wilmington or Lynnfield, you could, once the program is up and running, you could sign up and participate. And once we have the system here, and we learn what's good and bad about it, we can replicate that model in the other towns. So, our longer-term goal is to have an array like this, at least one in each of the four service towns.
Could you take about two minutes and wrap up? We're really getting a little behind here.
Okay. The, the status is, we've evaluated, I think originally, we had a list of ten or twelve sites, but we recently narrowed that down to three potential sites. And last week, we really narrowed that down to one choice, that our, by far suggested site is at the Reading High School, which you can see here. So, it's a combination of solar panels on the rooftop of the field house, as well as the solar canopy systems in the three parking lots. So, if we built out all of those as proposed, it would be a little bit over one megawatt worth of capacity. And to give you a frame of reference, if the high school chose to participate in the program and use twenty percent of that output, there would be enough power left over to completely power a hundred and twenty homes. Or if you only wanted to do half of the power, it could be two hundred and forty homes, and so forth, so.
That's during times when the sun's shining.
No, that's, that's average, average over the course of the year.
Oh, okay.
So, that, that's in kilowatt hours produced by a solar array over the course of the year. So, each kilowatt of capacity generates a hundred and twenty, twelve hundred kilowatt hours over a year.
Right.
Typical household uses about ten thousand kilowatt hours per year. So, each kilowatt can generate roughly ten percent of the power that you use, energy you're using in your home the whole year. So, it's a good chunk. It's certainly small compared to the total load on, the, the peak load of the whole R M L D system is around a hundred and sixty megawatts. So, this is one, so it's a small piece, but it is, you know, definitely contributing in a real way. Next, next steps and policy issues, as I mentioned, what we're doing primarily right now is detailing the financial plan, doing the initial system engineering. We have to do a finer level of detail to get the, the true cost. We have to work with the town folks to understand what a lease and pilot payment would look like. And we have to develop a specific net metering policy that would handle the logistics of how we would get customers to sign up, how we would pay them, how would their bill change, and those type of impacts. And then, as I mentioned, after this first system is deployed in Reading, we would look at deploying that same model in the other towns. The thirty percent tax credit I mentioned does expire at the end of next year, so we gotta make pay while the sun shines, and will that still air? It's possible that could be extended, but the way things are in Washington these days, who knows? And then, one last point I would, would wanna make is, there is engineering and logistical limit on how much solar we can have in the territory. And right now, our tentative cap on that is six percent of our overall load. So, the hundred and sixty megawatts I mentioned, you take six percent of that, it works out to about ten megawatts. So, the system I showed at Reading, we really could do ten of those before it would start to get to a point where we have to look at, you know, more engineering, or, you know, what are the impacts of having too much solar. Because, because of the fact that it's intermittent, you have to make sure that it doesn't, you know, make your system unstable or do any negative deals.
Question on procurement process, is this, what is the process for selecting a vendor? Is it sole source?
That actually is part of the, the next steps that we're doing, is to understand the procurement issues. Blue Wave Capital was selected through a partnership between the town and M A P C, Mississippi Health and Area Planning Commission. So, you know, they're doing some preliminary work with us, but something this big, my gut feel is we have to have some type of R F P or prices from other folks. But that's where we have to, you know, really work out those details. But it's, it's confusing, because we're not really spending two million dollars. It's really just agreeing to the contractual terms of this.
Well, I mean, there's nothing for nothing. There is a trade-off.
Right.
Because we're not in the business of.
We're responsible for performance.
You know, as you point out, there are, you know, there's benefits to all parties.
Right.
And that's clear. But, you know, it seems to me that although the timeline may be short, we are at this point a long way from being able to, you know, see the financials. I mean, the financials.
No, that, that's not true. Within the next month, we'll have the financial.
And so, are these financials, do they come out essentially in a cookie cutter's fashion? In other words, we do this, this is the way we always do it. Every community that's been recommended by M A P C to Blue Wave, I mean, how does that work?
It's not cookie cutter, because it's a relatively new concept, so, and especially as a municipal, it's a new approach. But, but that's what we're putting together now, and within the next month or so, we'll have the, some real numbers to look at, you know, in detail with Bob and his team, and say, okay, does this make sense, and do we go to the next step, or, you know, go back to?
Well, that's probably, that's, I guess what I'm saying, is that's the place of the negotiation.
Yes.
Because there is, there's a lot going on here. I mean, it is, in a simplistic way, and I actually endorse the fact that we're going down this path to explore it, and it's very wise that we're.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because, you know, it is out of the norm, so we wanna make sure we're doing things that make sense, we're all of us.
Hopefully, we've asked the right questions tonight. And Tom, thank you for your briefing.
Okay.
Thank everybody who's been working on this. Okay. I'm gonna ask the indulgences of the climate advisory committee, are you folks fine to stay through for the nine thirty end item, or are you not? Not all of you? Why don't we go forward with your report then, at this point? So, we have Dave Williams and Gina Snyder, right? Of course, Ron DeDario. Have a seat. Okay. Can we cover this in about ten minutes? Do your best. Okay, thank you. We're running a little long, if that's okay.
This is an update, but it's also a matter of renewal of our.
How much time do you need? What do you, what do you think? Ten is good, okay. I don't wanna cut you short.
So, it's an update, and also, we're up for the renewal, and we don't want to be sunset restricted. Okay. This gives us the members, and Joan, Ron, Gina is an associate member, but very important to us. This is a mission statement, kind of wordy, but we have been adhering to it as a town advisory committee volunteers, looking at environmental, economic, and societal sustainability, and, you know, trying to reduce energy, and energy costs, and foster environmental stewardship. So, we've been working on that for probably ten years, we'd say. About two weeks ago, we talked about the paper and cardboard recycling to this board, and that is still in process. We appreciate your support of that, with J R M, J R M Halling, providing the dumpster for that free. And we, as a climate committee, will continue to monitor this project. You've also been hearing a lot about the shared solar system. We certainly don't need to do much about that at this point, because you've heard the last half hour. We look at this as a extension of this local energy action program, which we were involved with for quite a while. And we look at it that would probably replace the green choice program with a visible clean renewable energy product that you can see, everybody can see in Reading, see what they're buying, and see what it's doing, which was not true of the green choice program. So, we're looking at, at that end of it, in terms of the sale to the customer, and. So, another thing which we've been doing very recently has been the Earth Day Fair a couple of weeks ago, and you can see. This doesn't show that, yes, it does, okay. We had several tables at the R M L D, and we're very appreciative to the work that the R M L D has done with us in providing a person on our committee, and also supplying a lot of the resources for our activities. And certainly, that was one of them. Here is one of our members, Ray Porter, who has a lot of environmental expertise and is involved with geothermal in his own home. And then, we had a display of electric cars. So, that's one of our activities. A lot of social outreach. Here we have Ron, DeDario, and myself, and Gina also were at the chemistry at the high school. Five courses, five classes of chemistry students in one day. Ron did a book report at the library, and Gina's been very involved with the Green Sense articles, which occur weekly.
I, I just, one very quick thing.
Go right ahead.
The book, The Sixth Extinction by Elizabeth Colbert, partly, I'm not saying we take any credit on this, but just today was awarded the Pulitzer for nonfiction.
Oh.
So, wow, who knew? I, I don't think we should take too much credit. I'm not looking for too much credit.
Maybe three months for four months.
So, upcoming, we're looking to work with the R M L D and continuing, and with the schools, and on the shared community solar concept. We also have recently adopted an island. It's a rather big island, but very visible near the train station. And we're looking at possible activities with the. at possible activities with the Council on Aging for Seniors Energy Efficiency Program, which would involve a lot of installation and the simple things that can be done, and continuing with the schools, churches, and libraries, and newspapers. So, remember, if you want to add anything to that in a couple minutes?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
So, we look forward to continuing.
Just so you know, we're going to discuss the idea of sunsetting or not tonight, but we're not going to actually vote till our next meeting, so this is a good opportunity to state your case, bring all the evidence before us for continuing.
Yeah.
And I think you've gotten off a good start, I'd say. So, we'll continue that discussion later in the evening.
Okay.
Once again, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Dave. Good job. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
Stick around. Okay. Walk Redding Weekend, we have obligatory here. Anyone else from your group?
We have several others here.
Oh, great. I will.
We'll make it quick.
Let me read the proclamation, and you can amplify on it. This is a proclamation for Walk Redding Weekend. Whereas, research shows that one in two men and one in three women are at risk for heart disease with poor lifestyle as a major contributor, and whereas, adults may gain up to two hours of life expectancy for every hour of regular vigorous exercise, and whereas, regular exercise has many proven benefits for an individual's overall health in addition to increased life expectancy, and whereas, walking, running, and bicycling are all excellent forms of exercise that are accessible to most of our citizens, that help the environment by reducing the use of motorized transport, and that allow our citizens to appreciate and learn about our neighborhoods and the open spaces in our community. And whereas, the Redding Trails Committee, the Redding Open Land Trust, and Walkable Redding encourage all Redding residents to participate in Walk Redding Weekend on Saturday, May thirtieth and thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, by getting outside and taking a walk, bike, hike, or run. Now, therefore, we, the selectmen of the town of Redding, in recognition of the importance of regular physical activity to promote individual and community health, and to reduce greenhouse emission, do hereby proclaim, May thirtieth and May thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, as Walk Redding Weekend, and urge all citizens to show their support for this effort by walking, biking, running, or hiking here in town on at least one of those days. So, would you like to add to that?
Just a little bit. We actually, everyone's going to pass out, we have our red ribbons on. Kevin's already, I don't expect him to take a walk that weekend with his tie on, but he's got some red.
Thank you.
We just, as a way of letting other people know that you're out there walking, and remind them that it's Walk Redding Weekend, that's why we suggested that everybody put on something red, just so that people will say, oh, yeah. Couple of important things, we have four organized walks that we've set up. There are going to be two on Saturday and two on Sunday. Saturday, there'll be a walk at the Pine Vale Conservation Area. Saturday at one, there'll be a town forest hike meeting at Wood End. Sunday, there will be, Dave Williams is going to do one of his bird walks up at the town forest.
That's a different Dave Williams.
That's on Sunday, yeah.
Okay.
And then, on Sunday at one o'clock, we're going to do a walk and historic house tour. Start at Parker Tavern, head up probably up Woburn Street to Summer, and back down Prescott, and see if we can hit a few highlights, and so, there's a variety of things that people can join in, but mostly, we want people to just get out and walk a bike or ride. You know, we have, if you go on the town website, all the conservation area, all the trail maps are online, neighborhood walks are online. On the library website, you can get to Walkable Redding's pod tour of historic houses, which would be great for a bike ride. So, you know, the, last year, we had people call in, or write in, or email into either Trails or Walkable Redding, and we totaled up the miles. We made it to Redding, Pennsylvania. This year, we're aiming for Redding, California, so, you know, I think we can do it.
That's spelled differently.
All right.
So, all the times, locations, and everything for the thirty first are on the website?
They are, there's a whole Walk Redding page on the town website, either can access it through Trails or through Walkable Redding's page on there.
Okay.
And then, we're going to have posters and things up all around town.
Any print publicity, the Chronicle?
Yes, Chronicle and the Advocate, there'll be articles, and it's been in the YCC and in the Redding Rec Magazine, so I think we've kind of covered a lot of the bases. There'll be a lot of flyers up all around at the Conservation Trailheads, and so on and so forth, so, going to get everybody out there, so, hopefully, good weather.
Good work.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, would you like to read the motion?
You can walk in the rain.
Don't go away.
Move to proclaim Walk Redding Weekend on Saturday, May thirtieth, and Sunday, May thirty-first.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? And we'd like to present you with this proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No photo ops?
No photo ops.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Thanks.
Okay. I'll take up the continued hearing on the liquor license transfer for Grumpy Doyle's. We don't need to read the notice again, we'll just reopen.
Okay.
The hearing was continued. So, representatives want to come up? Please reintroduce yourselves for the viewing public.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Trish Fonsworth, Lieutenant Henry Parisu, the proposed manager of Munagi, which is seeking to purchase Grumpy Doyle's license for the license. And we're here, the issue came up two weeks ago.
Yes.
I believe we arrested Lieutenant Armani, and we should have that in front of you.
We do.
So, I hope there's any more questions on that. We didn't really delve into, you know, the restaurant, proposed restaurant, and things of that nature. We're happy to do that, and we're satisfied with what was provided.
Other questions from the board? We received some supplemental information from the police indicating that they had no objection to moving forward. Does everybody had a chance to review that?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the public? This is a public hearing. Questions, comments? Any further questions from the board? Are we ready to close the hearing? I'll accept the motion.
I'd just like to make one comment, just so that we're clear. We're very happy that, you know, there's going to be revitalized business, that that business is going to continue, and I think it's important that we understand that our questions two weeks ago were simply a function of clarification. I mean, we've got responsibilities in a variety of areas, and one of them is a very serious responsibility, and that is managing liquor licenses, and so, for us, it was very important to get clarity, and I just want to say to you, thank you for the restated clarity that you provided to us, and look forward to what's going on in the new business.
Very good. All right, is there a motion to close the hearing, if there's no further comments? Okay.
Move to approve a transfer.
Close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
On the liquor license transfer.
License transfer for Grumpy Doyle's.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, the hearing is hereby closed, five zero. Secretary.
Move to approve the transfer of a restaurant, all alcohol liquor license to Munagi Servers Inc., doing business as Biltmore Main Bar and Grill at five thirty Main Street, for term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, subject to the following conditions. All bylaws, rules, and regulations of the town of Redding and of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be followed and subject to a satisfactory inspection of the establishment by the town manager or his designated.
Second to that?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Vote is five zero. License is approved. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
You guys are kicking the powers of the phone. I'd say that happens all the time here, so.
It's a little random.
I say sunspots, that's my fallback.
Anyway, we have another continued hearing for a new liquor license for Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, forty-eight Walkers Brook Drive. Are those proponents here?
We are.
Thank you. I'll reopen the hearing at this time, it was continued at our last meeting, and.
I'm Carol McCall, attorney for Anthony's, and with me is Cody Foot, who's the proposed manager.
Okay.
So, I thought I'd just kind of do a little bit of background, as to what Anthony's is, what they do, what they like to do at forty-eight Walkers Brook Drive. Anthony's is a national chain of coal-fired pizza restaurants, they have approximately fifty locations, majority of which are in Florida, they're also in New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and in two weeks, Westwood, hopefully. So, it'll be the second location in Massachusetts. Their specialty is coal-fired pizzas, and it's a, you know, family-friendly environment. You know, most of it focuses on food and not alcohol, but we do like to serve here in line with meals. If you'd like to see a copy of the menu, I'm more than happy to share it with you, but it's, you know, pretty standard, you know, pizza, salad, fish.
Fish balls, chicken wings.
Exactly. The proposed location is forty-eight Walkers Brook Drive, is going to be a complete rebuilding of that, one half of the building, they're rebuilding the whole, the whole restaurant area for Anthony's. We're hoping to be open fourth quarter of this year, but you never know. And it's going to be, there's going to be ninety-seven seats, there is going to be a small outdoor patio that consists of four tables with sixteen seats, and one of the things that Anthony's likes to do is, it's called indoor/outdoor bar, so the bar, it makes a U-shaped, to U-shape, but there are about eight or ten seats that are on the outside of the building, so in the summer season, people can sit at the bar and eat, and yet, still be outdoors, which is kind of a nice little thing to do in New England, where we can't be outdoors for very many months of the year. And that's kind of the general description of what Anthony's is, and what it's proposing to do at Walkers Brook Drive.
Just to be clear, that's the side of the former Macaroni Grill.
Correct.
So, with the viewing public.
Correct, and that's being split in two, as I understand it, with Anthony's on one side, and somebody else on the other.
Okay.
So, we're only taking half of it.
Bob, is there still a minimum seating requirement for a liquor license, or does that go away?
That went away.
Okay. Questions from the board? We also received the affidavit you sent in, and I think that the police have rendered their clearance on that, they have no objection to moving forward.
The one request I also would like to make in addition is I note that, per your regulations, that you need to have the premises open within a hundred twenty days of issuing the license. If construction goes closer to the end of the year.
Yeah.
I don't know that we're going to be guaranteed to be open in a hundred twenty days, so I just ask for.
You can come back and ask for a waiver.
The, the, the.
It's been done.
Place downtown, it's been done yet.
There you go.
We're extending it.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay. When does construction start?
Starting on that, I'm not a percent sure. We are just finishing up Westwood right now in Massachusetts, also a few other locations in Florida, so, a month, month and a half, would be my best guess.
The lease was signed only, you know, about three weeks ago, so I think they're probably still looking at, you know, preliminary planning, and permitting, et cetera, but I can give you a data, so when it, we think it might start.
What would you estimate the build-out to take, when do you expect to, as you sit here?
They usually turn in about five weeks, depending on everything that goes on. I mean, we're a pretty aggressive, a pretty simple chain, our kitchens are very small, we don't have a freezer, everything's fresh, so the hardest part is our coal-fired oven to build that, and that's pretty much tile and a bar, so.
Right, thank you.
Other questions? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing no questions, I'll ask for a motion to close the hearing for the new liquor license for Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza.
Move to close the public hearing for new liquor license for Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza.
Is that seconded?
Second.
All in favor? Vote is five zero, and you are approved, and good luck to you.
Oh, wait that.
Hold on one second. We just closed the, closed the hearing.
Oh, I closed the hearing. Sit down.
Move to approve a new restaurant, all liquor license to Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza of Redding LLC, doing business as Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza at forty-eight Walkers Brook Drive, for term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, subject to the following conditions. All bylaws, rules, and regulations of the town of Redding and of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be followed and subject to a satisfactory inspection of the establishment by the town manager or his deputy.
All right, is that seconded?
Second.
Discussion.
Just one comment for the applicant. You're relatively new to Redding, and by the way, welcome to, welcome to our town. We really are focused on growth of our commercial segment, Walkers Brook Drive, that whole complex is taking a long time, and it's nice to get built out, it's been there for several years, and it's nice to see one of the vacancies get full. This board knows, you may not, but we put a high premium on compliance with our serving clause, and we really have traditionally a very short fuse on noncompliance. We have a strong focus in our high school in terms of substance abuse, and we try to mirror that at the adult level with the way we, as administrators of the licensing, how we look at noncompliance with the licensing laws, so, appreciated if you keep it that way.
We're planning on having everyone either tips or serve safe certified, and Anthony's has an internal training program that focuses on, among other things, alcohol training for all of its employees, so they do take it very seriously.
We know people get busy and get distracted, and it's all the normal reasons why things don't get done the way they're supposed to, but we appreciate your attention, and thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the board? All in favor? It's five zero, and now you are approved.
Thank you very much, your side.
Okay.
You can leave a menu, by the way.
Yeah.
You like?
Okay, I have one, sure.
Bob will have.
They'll be ordering soon.
You order on the, online eventually?
Not, well, maybe. We'll see you guys on Westwood, come down.
Thank you. Yeah, I saw their.
Very good.
Pictures of it, it's beautiful.
Okay, the time has come to discuss the Lincoln Street forty B project. Gene, you want to sort of introduce?
Real quick, sorry, before you go, I just have to make one comment, bring the board to awareness. So, one of the investors, Matt Roman and myself, with the high school together, friends from high school. It's one thing, I have to, I haven't had a chance yet, I have to file with the clerk's office.
Okay.
A disclosure form stating that my company has no direct relation, or is not going to benefit in any way from what this project is, or you, myself or anyone in my company.
Thank you, Kelly. So, you're going to stay in the form with that disclosure?
I'm going to stay in the form with that disclosure. Matt and I were like both types of buddies, we saw each other the other day for the first time maybe in twenty-two years, from a communication standpoint as well, so, while we were high school friends then, you know, it certainly doesn't judge, or can share my judgment, but I wanted to let everyone know, I haven't had a chance to file with the clerk's office, I just been a little busy, but I am able to file that disclosure with the clerk's office.
Very good. Okay, with that, Gene, could you lead things off?
Actually, I had a question, David.
Yes.
You do?
Okay.
The notice map that's included on tonight's, at least the electronic handout.
Yeah.
Do we customarily notice businesses as well as? Yeah, anyone.
Anybody.
Anyone within that address. This is a little bit more notification than is customary, it just seemed like a reasonable thing to do. And if you look at the map, you know, a lot of property was on the other side of Washington Street.
Right.
We just did all addresses on Washington Street, it seemed like the reasonable thing to do. But I didn't see, at least in the yellowing map, I didn't see anything in the other side of High Street, even though the. No, that was, the other side of the tracks was just deemed to be too far away, not immediately impacted. But if there were a business within this territory, they would have cut the same.
Thank you.
All right. Everybody set?
I'm just covering.
Okay.
Gene, you want to lead things off?
Sure. They have a PowerPoint, so we're fooling with that as we speak.
While she's pulling that up, do you want to introduce yourself to the audience, sir?
Go ahead, Ken. Donald, team here.
I'll give a quick introduction. Matt Zucker with New Meadow Development, MKM Redding, and I'm here tonight with Ken Chase from New Meadow, and Matt Roman from New Meadow, MKM Redding. Also, Doug Carr from Cube Three Studios, our architect, and Jeff Angler from SEB Consulting. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the site at the corner of Lincoln and Prescott, the Duchet Building, and the Surly Wood. It's obviously a building in the condition, we'll go through the PowerPoint to see the existing photos. Just a quick update, we had a meeting last night with the neighbors, we invited the director of others, we had a good turnout, I believe it was very productive, we heard obviously some of the concerns and comments, some specific to, you know, the actual director of others, and some more general comments that we've heard, and that we'll continue hearing, and many of them are here tonight, so I'm sure they'll address that. We, you know, really take a lot of pride in all the projects we do, we treat everyone with, try to be reasonable, respectful, and responsible. We spent a lot of time looking at this site and trying to come up with a vision and a design that we felt was a great transition between downtown, the train station, to this kind of site that kind of didn't fit in to the residential neighborhood, and put a lot of thought into how that was going to look. It's still in, you know, we're still making changes to that, based on just our own internal Um, it's still in, you know, we're still making changes to that, um, based on just our own internal review and also comments we heard last night from the neighbors. There's other steps we haven't gone through yet, we, you know, have hired our traffic consultant, um, to start looking at some ideas that he has, uh, so some of those details we don't have yet. Um, so we look forward to going through the process, uh, with this board, with the zoning board and continuing the meetings that we will, uh, have in the future with the neighbors as well, so.
Um, just for the public's knowledge, some of you sent in emails today. Uh, emails up to about six, six-thirty are in the Board of Selectments packet tonight. Those that came after, just before seven, just got hand, handed out to them just before the meeting. So anything till about quarter or seven they have, but if it's after that, they may not have seating, just so you're aware.
With that said, I'll hand it off to Doug.
Um, thank you, Mary. As I, as I said, my name is Doug Carr, I'm a principal with Cube Three Studio Architects, we're out of Lawrence, Massachusetts. Uh, we specialize in multifamily design. We have projects, we have several thousand units already built within the greater Boston. And several thousand more on the boards and in the construction right now in cities as diverse as Waltham, Watertown, Medford, Cambridge. Uh, thank you, that's helpful. Uh, I think everyone's familiar with the site, obviously it's directly across the street from the, the commuter rail station. It's a classic example of transaurian development, which is something that we're seeing more and more of, obviously, as time goes on, because, uh, you wanna get the density and the people as close as possible to the train station and obviously have them get out of their cars wherever possible. Just a couple of existing, uh, that's an aerial photo in the middle that shows the, uh, outline of the property, the two existing buildings that are on the property. The one, the four-story building here on Prescott Street, and then there's a three and a one-story building here on Lincoln Street. And these are just some of the views that are, um, showing you from around the various sites, uh, looking, the one in the bottom right is looking down Prescott Street South. The building is outlined in red and the other one, uh, I guess Lincoln Street, up the upper left-hand corner, is looking towards it from this side as well.
And the Brown's Auto Repair is accepted from the.
Yes.
Yes, he's not part of it.
Yeah, the Brown's Auto's not a part of it.
Yes.
No.
Yeah, so this, this is their auto repair, which is not part of this site, it's just these two sites combined here. I think everyone's familiar with that, why don't we go to the next one? This is an aerial shot, uh, just to give you the context again, the commuter rail station here, the MBTA station, the commuter rail right here. Uh, this is the Prescott, is Prescott Street here and the four-story existing building here. We have the three and one-story building here and all of the associated parking in the back here. We also have a series of, uh, single-family homes along Washington Street that butt up against the site from the rear. Uh, I think a lot of those folks were at the meeting last night with Matt and they had a, a good discussion about some of the concerns about the butters here. Uh, the existing site has two entrances, uh, one from Prescott, this is this arrow right here, the other one, uh, from, uh, from Lincoln Street. Um, if you go to the next slide, you'll see that we're basically keeping them, but shifting them a little bit. We have, we're keeping an entrance off of Prescott Street for the building, it's really two buildings, building A and building B, which are five-story buildings, one story of parking and then four stories of stick frame above with a slope roof. Uh, so we, our intention was to have an in-and-out here, but an exit only, um, onto Lincoln, uh, Lincoln, um. That, just, let me get back up a little bit, the, um, the traffic is something that has really not been studied, that's something that's ongoing, that was something that needs to be done as we get further into the project, there'll be a, a more detailed traffic study. This is obviously conceptual, but we're just trying to show that how, what we think is the right approach for vehicle entries in and out of the site with this, with this diagram. Next please. Uh, the outlines here are the two existing buildings that will be demolished. This is the, um, the one on Prescott Street, it's about a hundred and fifty feet long, along Prescott. The other one, uh, is about an eighty-foot frontage along, uh, Lincoln. If you go to the next one, you'll see the, the new, um, the new frontage, it goes from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy feet along Prescott and we keep approximately the same frontage of eighty feet along Lincoln, uh, although it's a little bit set back from it. This building along Prescott is actually pretty much in line with the existing building that's there right now, the four-story, um, storage building, people call it. Uh, next please. Um, one of the things we're trying to do, uh, is provide a little bit of a buffer to the, uh, the butters in the property, on the backs and the side of this property, that's what this, these green, uh, portions represent here. Um, we're still trying to get some here, it's a very tight site right now on the back, so we did talk with the neighbors last night and I believe, uh, Matt and the development team have committed to, if they can't put it on their property, trying to put some more green buffer with the permission of the owners on their property, if they wanna see a tree or some plantings, whatever, to try to give a, a better green buffer between obviously the, the scale of the existing houses here and the larger development here. Next please. Um, this is gonna be a series of diagrams to show, taking you through the floor plans of the site. We'll, we'll start with the parking, go to a typical floor and show the roof, and then we'll get into the elevations, we can talk about, um, how they came to be. Again, existing conditions here, this is the Prescott, the other building in the corner is not part of the development. If you go to the next slide, it shows the property outlines and the red dots here, you can see what the outline of the property is, as we discussed. Uh, next slide is the parking layout. Again, I mentioned before, we're gonna come in and out off of Prescott here. We have approximately, um, one car per unit right now, seventy-seven units. Uh, we have two buildings, building B and A, building A is slightly larger, uh, building B over here. And we have the exit one-way onto Lincoln Street on this side as well. We're also activating this corner with the elevators and lobby and the stairs, that will be a, a destined for the zone. And again, we have those buffers along the edges here in the light green color.
I can ask you a couple of questions a little while here.
Please.
Uh, when we did, uh, oh, when we did, uh, Haven Street, I forget the ratio of parking to units, I think it was one and a half?
One and a quarter.
They actually put in more than that.
But the, as, as designed, it was one and a quarter, they, they built it with more.
Little bit more.
With, to what degree do any of our parking regs cover the, this?
This will be exempt from all zoning as a forty B, it'll bypass local zoning and it'll be, um, a comprehensive permit to the zoning board of appeals, but they don't have any rules.
What, what is the bedroom count in these apartments? Are they apartments or condos?
They're all apartments.
That would have to be.
Right now, they're all planned as apartments, um, which, you know, obviously finding the right balance for the parking ratio is important just from a market viewpoint as well. Being on the train is, is one factor, being downtown. So right now, uh, seventy percent of the units are one-bedroom units.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, as we get further with the traffic study and reports and the data on, you know, how many demand for one-bedrooms by train stations and all the data that's out there, so, um, we're still looking at that ratio, but that, you know, from, based on discussions about thirty Haven maybe having too many and not wanting to put more than we need, but it's an ongoing, uh, discussion in terms of.
We don't need to tell you, you probably walked that neighborhood during the commuting hours, there is not a spare parking spot to be had around that.
Yes, a spillover is a real concern.
Right.
If you're depending on any spillover, uh, you're, you're taking what's already an untenable situation, that's my concern. It's one, it's probably, I'm not in construction, but it seems below what I would expect for, even for a one-bedroom, you typically may have two people with two cars.
And the police chief has expressed concerns about parking.
I think that'll be probably one of the biggest concerns on that, because as, as someone who regularly commutes, um, I need to get to that parking area generally twenty minutes before the train leaves in order to basically make it even worth driving down. So when you're adding seventy-seven units, um, and if, um, there's ninety-five cars, um, you know, it should be made clear that the expectation of those folks who are gonna be renting there is that, you know, there's gonna be strict competition for those spots and it shouldn't. So I, I would, I would look at adding more parking, one just for the names and also for the market building as a view.
Gene, has, um, Chief Burns, I'm not familiar with how it's different firefighting with a building that's built on here, so has he looked at this?
Yes, we had a development review team meeting last week and he has very strong concerns about that and other things to do with, uh, safety, public safety.
How would you get to the back of the building since?
Exactly.
Right.
That's one of them and, um, the height and the clearance, since you're putting the parking underneath the building, now you're gonna get a, a fire apparatus underneath, so the clearance is an issue.
Is that, are those concerns also exempt from any further challenge?
Um, at this point, what they've asked for from mass housing is a letter of approval. So, um, those issues will probably be, if mass housing gives them the green light and says, then we'll have to hammer through how to do the parking, there'll be a parking study, um, pub, any of the concerns about public safety, there's a concern in the height that the fire chief has expressed, um, with the fire code. So as we get into fire codes and building codes, then they will have to con, conform to that.
Right.
Um, but they, they don't have to conform to any zoning codes.
And this density, another stupid question, is this kind of density of that location, is that a stressor for any daily utilities, whether it be water, sewage, water?
Yeah, we, we don't know, um, but that would definitely have to all be worked out in the plans. And this, this density is five times what is allowed in the Smart Growth District. And that's a dense district, so, um.
And it's apartments, which means you have more, um, turnover in terms of residence, right?
Yes, and there's, I think, seven three-bedrooms?
Eight.
Eight three-bedrooms? So that's a little, we haven't seen that yet in any of the developments, there've been, haven't been any three-bedrooms.
That, that's not by choice, that's, uh, that's a state requirement.
That's a state requirement.
Affordable component.
Data by the code, yeah.
No, under forty B now, you have to have ten percent of the units as three-bedrooms.
But the town give credit for all seventy-seven?
Yes, as rental.
Can you define forty B for us?
It's a mass general law that basically allows developments to go through a separate process, which is a comprehensive permit process from the zoning board of appeals. Because Reading does not have the state mandate of ten percent of our housing units as affordable, we haven't met that goal yet, we're closed, but we're not there. Then that creates the opportunity for the comprehensive permit avenue for, uh, developments to come in that way and bypass local zoning and do it as, you know, this kind of density and this, parking is not, you know, you can't, it just, they can do, you know, based on a study, they can have some, we can have some role from the zoning board of appeals, but they don't go by what our parking requirements are. They don't go by what our height is, they don't go by any of our zoning requirements, um, and they can just, it's meant to be a denser development.
Uh, could you identify yourself for the record?
Tom Sparrows.
Thank you.
And property owner, my wife's property owner, but I'm, property owner of twenty-two Prescott Street.
Okay.
Which abuts both Prescott and Washington.
Thank you, John.
The, the white donut in the center of building A, is that an opening or, um, is that meant to be a court, courtyard of sorts?
No, I'm sorry, I can show you the plan above, this is actually parking in the middle, this is the drive out all around here, it connects the house. So you'll see the building above is actually almost U-shaped and it's a little bit of a courtyard here.
So the intent of the white is to, they want?
Well, that's just non-parking spaces, it's, it's just, it's a striped area that you can't park on, it's not large enough, you can put a bike there, but you can't put anything, you can't put a vehicle legally there. Yeah, keep going. Sorry, keep going, next one.
Yep.
Yes, the, um, so, uh, sorry, back, can you go back one, we went past the typical floor, yeah, this is the typical floor plan, there's four levels here of, of, uh, housing, you see the dividing lines, the smaller units are obviously the one-bedrooms, uh, double-loaded corridor and then this building, uh, A and B here, they're connected as well. The pink are the stairs and the, this is the lobby and the entrances over here. So this is four stories above the parking. The next one shows the roof plan, it was very important for us to have a, a sloped roof that was in the character of what's around it. We, a flat roof is, uh, we, we got the feedback from the neighbors, et cetera, so these are all gable roofs with, uh, with, uh, uh, dormers and, and gables, so we're trying to articulate this roof and break it up and make it somewhat fit into the, more of the context, which is the, uh, the sloped roofs that exist all around it, obviously, in a different scale. Next one.
Yes, Barry.
Yeah, I just, um, have a question about, about the roofs. I, I had a chance to go through your packet a little bit and it looked like with the five stories, with the gabled roofs and the peaks, you're gonna hit with five stories about a sixty-three foot, uh, height.
That's at the peak of the roof, yes.
At the peak, well, that's the.
Yep.
The top of it, whereas the current, though, that is only a little about forty, forty-three.
Forty-four is what?
So that's almost a forty percent increase in just in height, uh, and so that, that's a little concerning for the folks who are a little behind there that now you're putting something that's even that much, even though it's pretty to look at, granted, than what's there now.
Sure.
It's still forty percent higher than what's currently there.
Let me, let me address that, it's a valid point. Um, this is the, um, this is where the roof takes off here, at the fourth floor. We've integrated the fifth floor into the roof, so that the roof starts sloping at about, roughly, though, we, a few feet above what the existing roof line is now and obviously it slopes back. So you're right, this, at this point, you are at sixty-three feet, but down here, you're almost twenty feet lower, where it starts sloping back in terms of the, the massing of this thing. So we don't feel, it will feel like a sixty-three foot tall building, because if it was flat, obviously it would, it would feel like six stories. It's really, we're trying to break it down so that it, it's really a base and a middle and a height and we try to make the, the top floor feel like it's part of the roof as dormers, as, you know, windows, rather than as a full floor that is usual about ten feet tall. So that's one of the ways we try to articulate this building a little bit. We also make sure that the parking level, which is behind this lower level, is pedestrian-friendly. We have glass, we have, you know, canopies, we have entrances, um, we have a building entrance on the corner here, this is the Prescott Street elevation, by the way. So we know, we're trying to put large windows, textured materials, we're articulating the wall so it's not flat, it's broken up. We've got these brackets in the corner, deep overhangs, we're trying to get, create shadow. So we don't, we don't want a flat building, because it, it's one of the ways you make an improvement on these buildings, just to break it down so it feels like smaller pieces, you know, these are six by six foot windows, uh, these, these ones here. Um, again, lodges, the entrances, and also different types of materials, different textures, different colors of, of, of panels, fiber cement and other shingles, and it gives, it has that residential texture and quality that we think is so important to the success of this type of building.
Is there any retail component to this at all?
There is not, there's just, there's just, the bottom is parking and then there's the lobbies and the stairs and that's really all there's room for.
Do you have a question on the audience?
Are there decks built on the back?
Uh, there are no balconies or decks that I've seen, we designed at this point. And the, the elevation of the back should be pretty much comparable to this, we intend to keep the same materials on all four sides of the building, no matter.
My concern is just that at that height, if there are balconies and people are out there till ten o'clock at night.
No.
That thing carries.
No, I, I, we've seen that before, that's, that's usually, uh, we're very careful not to do that and also the people who run the building can control that as well, but we don't, we don't have any balconies on this right now. Uh, next slide, please.
Can I, uh, ask a question?
Sure, could you identify yourself, please?
Uh, yes, Jody Avjust, and, um, I, um, own the, if you go back to the app that shows, uh, uh, Prescott and Arlington Street together. Anyway, if you would just keep going back, till, keep going back, okay, fine, right there, that's fine. Um, so, there's a house, if you can see that house on the left, yeah, right there, yep. That house, very small, two-family house, is for sale.
It's sold.
Oh, it's sold, okay, fine. That's too bad, because would've been, would've been helpful to purchased it and then had that for more parking.
No, it's not my property.
Huh? Oh, yeah.
It's in the building, it would've been next to my property.
That's you.
And, um, the second question is, see across, across the street, there's a white truck. Right there, that guy, that truck has been there for at least fifteen years. So, if you got rid of that, there's a little more parking, or could you purchase that, some of that?
I have a shared, shared parking arrangement, which is very much.
We painted it a different color, so it's a little switchy enough. Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to, to investigate, you know, parking and as, as we go through the process.
Creative solutions would be very welcome, yeah.
And so we're, you know, we're, it's the beginning of the process and we're kinda just taking in all the comments and as we keep moving forward, we'll look at all those.
Uh, thank you for that, yeah, uh, Linda.
Linda Snow Doctor, um, I'm actually wondering whether your plan has any social spaces built into it so that the residences can nurture community within and have a space to get to know each other and.
Oh, would we, we haven't, it, it's still preliminary schematics inside, so, uh, from one, that point to just the marketability of a building, um, I've been involved with, uh, residential apartments all over and see where that need, um, the ebb and flow, some places use it more and some don't, so trying to find that right mix of, um, you know, something like a gym or, you know, something like a little business place inside or even a meeting room or, usually what you find today is a lot of flex spaces that could be used for different things inside of a building. So, um, as, as we continue to develop the plans with the architect, we're, uh, looking at, you know, different ideas inside the building. So we haven't got that one yet, I don't think we've put anything in yet, but we haven't really, you know, broke that subject.
Okay, Barry.
Well, you have that slide up there, just, it kinda really, um, in a nutshell, kinda talks to sort of the real complexity of the site. I mean, you, you're, you're planning on building fairly nice, uh, rental apartments, whose market rents are probably higher than most people's mortgages. Yet, right at the tip of that site is an automotive use that, um, to be kind, is not as nicely facadeted as maybe your building is now. So, I, I'm, I'm wondering, I, I know that efforts have been made to try to acquire that parcel and obviously, if it were, we'd be looking at a much different design. But can you just talk to how you have a plan on marketing around? But can you just talk to how you have a plan on marketing around that? And it just, it just doesn't seem to kind of, it seems like you're shoehorning this project into that space and that, and, and without that corner piece, it just, it just doesn't seem to kind of work.
Or, and/or, have you tried to purchase?
One at a time, yeah. Please go to your comment.
Yeah, I, I think the real draw to a site like this is obviously being on the train. You know, you look, even on the other side of tracks, there's a lot of automotives here. So I think that downtown's in a transition phase where to make it more welcome and more pedestrian friendly, you, and you need more people to live there, you need businesses like they have at Thirty Haven. So clearly from a design standpoint, and the architect would love to say, I have that corner and, and maybe there's more different things we could do with it. I, I don't think it would change the feel or look of our building. It may change where it sits and, and some of the layout. But the draw to a site like this is being so many feet from the train, so many, you know, downtown. So from a marketability, it, it probably doesn't hurt it as much as it does from a design standpoint because the units will look the same inside, they'll be, you know, high quality and, and the building will look as nice. Is it the ideal situation? Is there maybe a better design with that corner? Probably, but, you know, it's not.
Having said that, it feels an avenue to, to consider that parcel.
Could you please identify yourself and we, we totally recognize you. Is that, is that her hand up?
Maybe, this is what the gentleman's getting at. Have you attempted to purchase that, it's a two-family, you know, that's the brown? No.
Oh, this one?
No.
The high.
Yes.
To the left.
No. Keep going.
Your other one?
Certainly would, right beside the corner there.
With the, yeah.
Fulton and.
Yeah, that's a, a two-family, I think. Have you attempted to purchase it?
That particular, is that?
You, go ahead.
That, that particular property, we, we haven't yet, but we, you know, it's a, you know, we're open to suggestions. There's another one on Washington Street too that seems to be rundown, maybe, and I don't know if it's in the state or something. So we'll look at that also.
Sir, just, do you have a comment?
I was just gonna address the question that came up. Ken Chase with New Meadow Development, part of the development team. What I was gonna, I'll just add to the response to Mr. Roman's question was that, that site is still something that we're interested in. So, you know, in our minds anyway, the conversation isn't over. And we're just kind of at a, a point where we feel like we've exhausted at least our, our immediate avenues to try to make a deal.
John?
Just a reminder for those in, in the audience, there are people that are watching at home and they desperately want to hear your questions because I bet they mirror their own. So the microphones are in the ceiling. Just stand, give your name, the street you live on, and your voice will divun from him pretty young. Okay, you're next.
Hi, Gene Thomas's twenty-one Arlington Street. So I'm concerned about this footprint at the ground level and at the height level. I live on the other side of Prescott Street.
Yes.
So, you know, Washington Street has a buffer of trees and I'm very empathic. The other side of Prescott Street. I'm very empathic with the people on Washington Street, but they, you know, they do have their trees. There's something there. Let's, and, so let's look across the street and what's the buffer for people on Arlington Street? Or Prescott Street? We have very little buffer. I'm concerned about the lighting and I'm concerned about the fumes, very much concerned about the fumes. If you have cars entering and exiting right across from me. I'm concerned about the sun, you know, with such a high building, the footprint of the, the height and, and what it will do to the, the effect of climate and in the terms of sun. And I'm, as a teacher in the system, I'm concerned about the impact on the schools.
Sure.
You know, what you would anticipate would be the student population going into that building. And because Arlington Street is so vulnerable to parking circumstances as it is now. We have parking on one side of the street only. There's no parking until ten-thirty in the morning. But these things are taken advantage of. And as homeowners, we can't park in front of our houses until ten-thirty in the morning. So it's a matter of the parking, the height, the sun, the lighting at night in particular.
Sure.
The density of the parking, having two entrances on a residential street. Perhaps the, the in and out could be on the train side. That's, that's a commercial side. That's an already, we've got the fumes and the sound of the train.
Sure.
Sound of the train is good. Fumes, not so good. So all of these concerns, I ask you to consider and address please.
They're all reasonable, they're very reasonable concerns, all of them. One thing I'll just mention briefly, the, the garage is probably gonna have a mechanical system within it because it won't be open enough because of the way we've designed it to be, you know, more enclosed than not. So that would cover a lot of the, you know, obviously cars coming out, just like they would on the street. You can't do much about that, but the cars within the footprint will be dealt with with a mechanical system.
What does that mean?
It, it just means that there are fresh air and there's air changes and, and the, any fumes are captured usually with those systems as much as possible. Whereas an open air garage, which has nothing, you know, which is just the air flowing through it. So that's not what we have.
What part is open? Only the entrance and exit or is it the whole floor?
Um, it's open at the, at the, actually, this is the entrance. This is the entrance of the garage right here. Sorry, right there. So, but the rest of it along both sides and some of the back, not all of it, is in, is enclosed here with a wall and glass. So it's, it's, it, you might not even know this car's there if you, if you just walked in by and you didn't know any better because of that. Because we wanted that to feel more friendly pedestrian, not to see car grills. You know, the glass could be fitted or, you know, textured so that it won't, you, the lighting's an important issue too. And we would obviously deal with that. Not having balconies means there's no lights outside. So you're just looking at the glow from the windows, which obviously this, this light. There's things that Matt and the development team can deal with, those lighting issues, to make sure that your concerns are addressed.
There's very little setback right now.
Yes.
There's almost no setback.
That's right.
How are you gonna put greenery there? Or is the greenery taking up more than the presence of?
I think in this rendering, it's actually pretty much in the sidewalk, I think, because it's, the building in place is very close to where it is now.
Sidewalk's kind of the street at the same time. So please think about the height.
Sure.
And the setback.
Thank you.
Okay, laying in the back.
Seventy-six Washington Street. So we moved to Reading because we're facing the park and it's really tall yet. So can you expand a little bit on the parking garage right now? My house given, will see the building where the garage apart right now. So it's a concern of hearing cars on the back of our house and now we're living on a one-way street in front of a park and we'll have a big parking garage in the back. So how much is gonna be open in our backyard?
I frankly think it's gonna look more like this than not, but we haven't, we haven't fully got there yet because we don't, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that are in motion right now. We were just talking about three or four changes to the site potentially, which obviously would change everything. But the intention was to, as much as possible to landscape the back to provide a green buffer between your houses. And if it's not enough to do it on the property itself, we would try to, if, with your permission, we would do it on your property to give it as much possible a green buffer along that entire back.
But it's really hard. The, the building comes so close to our log that, you know, you can put a few trees, but if it's open right there, you know.
Well, the, the, the pressure of parking pushes those cars closer. If we, the building itself is actually not on the back line. It's actually about ten or twelve feet back off the property line, in the back, against your property. So.
It seems awfully close right now, but.
The parking goes up. Sorry, I had two, one more. Yeah, this is what I was talking about here.
But there was parking on the other plane there.
The other plane shows parking right up to the line.
Right, that's correct.
That's the log that ends right there.
All by seat.
Right, but if we compress this as much as possible, maybe make this one way so that this aisle could be four or five feet shorter. You'll get a green buffer in between there. There's ways to do that once we get into more detailed design.
John and then the gentleman in the back. Go ahead.
Sir, what's the plan to service the building for a garage pickup or emergency vehicles?
Yeah, these buildings usually have a trash and recycling chute that all the residents go to and it's collected in the, in the, in here in the garage level and wheeled out in two, two yard containers and picked up outside. That's usually what we do. So there's no dumpsters anywhere, there's no, it's all in an enclosed room or so often it's in these type of white spaces we talk about. You store it all there and it's picked up a couple of times a week. It's normally how these buildings are operated.
So the big dump truck, the big garbage truck comes in, how's it get from your white space to the truck?
It has to be wheeled out by the people who run the building.
Okay. Have you thought about reducing the parking below ground level to accommodate the height to be overall length? Is that a possibility?
I think it is. I think MATT has studied, they, they, they haven't got everything back from the site yet, you know, but I think they're, they're gonna look at that to try to depress it as well. We, just so you know also, this podium, this is a podium project. It's a, got a, it's, it's called, you know, you have four stories of stick frame, wood frame above, but by code you have to have a concrete and steel fire separation. So it's like a platform, you build a wood building on top of, below is the parking. Those do not normally have fire trucks go through them because you, you would make the building a lot taller to deal with a fourteen-foot truck plus structure. You actually want it to be lower because it's fully sprinkled, both the garage and the other building. Most, most of these projects, and these are all over Greater Boston, there's, there's dozens of these. They, none of them have fire trucks that drive into the garage. Like most parking garages only have about an eight-foot clearance. Any parking garage you go in in Boston or anywhere really will only have about a maximum eight-foot clearance. So there's never an intention that a, a fire truck would come here because that would make the building even taller. We want to make it even slower.
So you'd use stand pipes to hook up from the outside?
Absolutely. There's stand pipes in every stair. They can fight, these are fully sprinkled. There's a dry system in the garage. It's fully, it's, it's a standard, it's a standard building type that the five corners, cross messages, it's a, except for.
We had a question in the back. Can you identify yourself, sir?
Yeah, Tom Keating, ninety, Washington Street.
Yes, sir.
I asked this question last night at a meeting. I didn't get an answer, so I'm gonna ask again. If the garage sells, it becomes part of the project, does that mean the units go up beyond seventy-seven?
Um, you know, at this point, we kind of went into this last night. It's, it's, you know, part of it's the economics of it. We don't have control of that site yet. We, we, we try. It may, it may change the look of the building and I, I would imagine, given that, you know, it's a cost to purchase that, there'll be some change, but at this point, until we have it, it's kind of hard to say what that looks like. And, and if we are able to purchase that, you know, obviously we'll be working on the revised plan and bringing that back to the board, to the neighbors first and then to the selectmen and then.
Seems to me your work is gonna drive up that property value, so you may, that may actually make it harder.
So, so the gentleman's question was, would there be more than seventy-seven units, I guess?
I'd imagine that for, unlikely, yeah.
Yes.
So, I'm Tom Sparros from twenty-two Prescott Street, sorry. So if they purchase either of these houses, so twenty-four, twenty-six is sold, we don't know who the, we don't know who the buyer is yet. I, I'm not aware of who the buyer is. We don't know if he may resell or she may resell to this property at some point. Does that then exclude it from being a forty-B construction site? Once he purchases a residential property and busts that and builds on top of residential property?
Are you saying?
So this is a forty-B development.
Yeah.
Right.
Because it's on, because it's on such a development and because he's buying a specific building.
No.
Yeah, it doesn't run to the building, it's the permitting process. So anybody can, can go through this process because Reading is not at the ten percent requirement for the total housing units being affordable. So that's why we are vulnerable to fortyBs anywhere in town.
Got it, okay.
Any neighborhood could get a forty-B.
In some town.
Anyhow.
Barry, and then Margaret.
Follow a question to Mr. Keating's question.
Yes.
So again, you know, going into the future of it, if you are able to acquire the side of the garage, I mean, Mr. Keating's question was, well, is that just gonna make this project denser? My question would be, if you're able to acquire that, would you be open to putting, re-confering the project so you can put some retail in there and have more of a mixed-use project, which is kind of what Haven Street is, which most people would think is, is widely successful?
We've had discussions internally and with the town about the retail on the site. You know, what, what retail works is, you know, I mean, is it, you're talking just the professional office or, you know, market? I mean, so trying to figure out what that is. Clearly, without, with the corner, maybe there's an opportunity. Yeah, the viability of retail on the site in terms of, you know, from the retail standpoint, you know, how strong is that? For what would work there, taking into account traffic and parking and all those other factors that you would have to consider on the site. So that's why it's hard to say, answer the question, if we had the corner, what does that mean? Because it could mean retail, it could mean more units, it could be a different design, you know, and some of that factors in if what, what you pay for it, you know.
My, my question is, would you be open to a redesign that includes retail?
We'd, we'd be open to exploring it. And I think we've already had explored retail on the site, so yes is the short answer.
That was a lot of the comments that I got from.
Can we get questions from people that have not, then I'll come back to people that have already spoken. A gentleman on the end here?
Yeah. Nick Iello, ninety-two, ninety-four, Washington Street. I had a chance to speak with Ken and Matt yesterday about this, but one of my major concerns here is just the sheer scale of the building, the height. I, the house is, has one of the backyards that goes up against the, the, the back of the development. And, you know, right now, the building that's there currently is not pretty by any means, but it is, you know, fifty feet away or something. Now we're talking about within a couple of feet of the property line, going up five stories. So I know that we've talked about possibilities for, to try to mitigate that a little bit with trees and things. It's really hard for me to even envision how a tree would even, I don't know, help with that situation at all. That loss of privacy, those families that, that live in that and try to, you know, enjoy that, that, that space, that yard.
Seems to me that eighty, ninety percent of the questions in this room would be satisfied. If you could cut one story out of this building A, if that does not affect your financial viability, I think it's a serious consideration I would commend to you to think about. Understanding we don't, we don't control this, but I think that solves an awful lot of these issues. Gentleman over here, then I'll get to Ron.
I'm James Al, twenty-five Prescott. I agree with that. My god, why, like, why not go eight stories up? My main question here is, you've got the overhand right close to the street. So as I'm walking to the train in winter, how often should I expect ice to fall in me because it's really big now?
Uh, Ron?
Hi, I'm Arundhat Darian, seventh summer. I was wondering if you got the garage, if you were able to have a garage, maybe that might be a reason for you to eliminate one story, where you might be able to get more residences or something like that. It, it does seem to me, you know, I don't know why we always have to have something. You're right on the boundary line, five stories up. It's the end of sunlight for some people. I would ask, you know, we always say, well, will the financial, the finances don't work. What about the human life and quality of life of the people around it? Do the finances not work? I mean, why not, you know, eliminate at least one story, have some setback. I mean, it's nice of you to offer to have a buffer in other people's property. I mean, come on now, you, you've got the property. I mean, you know, make it work. So maybe you don't have seventy-something units, you know, maybe you have fifty. And I would hope that the finances could work, so everybody could be happy. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm Paul Stoddard from ninety-six Washington. Our house literally butts up against the certainly wood location. And I second, I agree with everybody. We have two little kids, we moved into a, we thought, a nice quiet, you know, our house is a hundred-and-fifty-year-old house, neighborhood, and now we're gonna, our kids are gonna be looked out the window and see a monster building that will overshadow any sun. We have gardens in the back that will probably not get sun now. It's just disappointing to think that, you know, they just built a new playground down the street and it's just, you know, the Washington Street's a one-way. The cars come down, there are parking at both sides. There's a parking regulations from May to, you know, November to May. They can only park on one side. There, you know, it's, you can't get the garbage trucks down the streets because of the congestion of traffic, you know, it's just, it's really not good. I don't think it's.
Camille?
Yeah, Camille Anthony, Work Department. Do you know how, what height building our fire department is now capable of fighting fires at? What the height level is of our ladder trucks, et cetera?
Probably more than that.
They can easily hit this height, but they can't hit the back of the building. That's the issue. From the front, they can certainly address the.
They can. All right. So should this development go forward, who's responsible for buying the fire equipment in order to meet the fire needs?
There is no fire equipment available that can service the back.
Right, which means we, it's gonna have to be purchased.
There is no such thing.
There is no such thing?
I mean, they, I'm not, I'm not a fire expert, Camille, but a lot of that would probably be done inside with stand pipes and internal fire suppression. They go in the building.
You can only get the one side of this, of this building with a fire truck. Everything else is landline.
Go ahead.
In regards to that, Gene, so there's not much that the town can do as far as the police's recommendation on traffic studies or the chief burn's recommendation on, you know, fire equipment, right? Over to forty-B. What exactly are the parameters that, that those two bodies have to say, anything?
Well, at this point, the town is able to put together a comment letter, which we have drafted, um, and we have all the comments of all the different departments, like the two chiefs. Um, and we'll try and make the argument, and we do in our letter, that there might be some other ways of going at this rather than a forty-B. Um, we, we were hoping, and we've been working with MAPC on visualizations for expanding the forty-R district. In fact, this originally was in the forty-R district. And under forty-R, um, if it's all residential, you can only go up thirty-three feet. So, um, you know, and, and you would be required to go mixed use if you're gonna go forty-five feet.
Was removed from forty-R?
It was, yeah, back in two thousand and nine.
Gentlemen.
Not by staff.
Nope.
It was the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
Not this board. Not this board. But it was in there.
For the record, my name is Jeff Angler with SEB. We're forty-B consultants and developers. We've been involved with the permitting and development of twelve thousand units of multifamily housing and I'd actually like to answer some of the general questions, hopefully for the benefit of the neighborhood. Many might be sitting here thinking, geez, you know, a lot of the, the developers don't seem to have answers to some of these questions, or what's the deal, why haven't they thought of this? I think it's important to recognize that this is a long process and this is really the beginning, where an application for site approval has been submitted to mass housing. The town is now within its thirty-day comment period to submit comments to mass housing about the development and I would recommend, as it sounds like the town is doing, to incorporate all the comments from, from the board and other boards and, and groups in, in the town as well as the neighborhood to mass housing so that those comments can receive their proper attention as the process moves forward. Mass housing will evaluate this application primarily at more of a conceptual thirty-thousand foot level. Does this site generally work for residential housing? What's around it? Does developer have the financial capability to do this? Is it more or less consistent with what the town wants? And they'll evaluate that and if they feel that the site is worthy to move forward, they'll issue what's called a site approval letter. That's basically the applicant's ticket to move forward with the Reading Zoning Board of Appeals. It's at that process really where, where we need to more technically and specifically answer many of these questions. A landscaping plan, a utility plan, a grading and drainage plan, more, more advanced architectures. That's where all the technical dialogue occurs, traffic, parking, all of those things. So I, I wanted the neighbors to know that there's going to be many more hearings, it's a long process in terms of talking about those, those technical elements and the town is within its right to hire peer-reviewed consultants. So the town will not take the applicant's word for traffic or for other things, they have the right, they can do it internally. I'm not sure how Reading has handled previous fortyBs, but they can hire a consultant to look at stormwater management, to look at traffic, to look at all of those other technical related issues that really the applicant has to demonstrate that it can meet the threshold and the criteria. It, it was kind of characterized a little bit that forty-B is just, oh, let's do a forty-B and build something and it'll be great. There are, there are waivers that are, that are requested and can be granted by the zoning board under forty-B that the developer will not have to adhere to certain waivers that the town requires, but it's not a willy-nilly process. The developer needs to meet all DEP requirements, all DEP stormwater management, traffic safety. So it, it's not an arbitrary kind of analysis that goes on. There are very specific measurements that the developer will have to meet. And then regarding a couple of other things, and we're involved with a lot of projects and frequently parking is brought up, more and more developments, particularly in these kinds of locations, the state and others are encouraging parking to go down, not up, and we're finding ratios going down, not up, because the people, particularly millennials and whatnot, are not having cars with the same frequency that people my age or elderly. And it's proven fact that people have fewer cars and also this is in a mixed-use area. People say would like to see mixed use, would like to see retail. Retail requires much more parking than residential. Moreover, residential complements all the people going to work because the people that live here, they'll be leaving if they drive during the day and coming home at night and the people using the train leave at night, so it's a symbiotic relationship. Don't take my word for it, those are the types of things that will have to come out through the analysis. Also, under forty-B, and we hear it a lot and it's a valid question, but impact on schools is, is not a valid criteria to evaluate a forty-B project because it, it's sad to say, but pretty much every municipality that we work in, put it frankly, hates children because of the school age impact. You would never build a single-family house.
That's true.
If you considered school age impacts, because single-family housing is family housing. This is not family housing and it will be physically positive for the town of Reading because one bedrooms and studios and even two-bedroom units do not produce school age children. Will there be some children in three-bedroom units? There will, but when you consider the whole development and the tax implications of all the studios and ones, it'll be a home run for, for the town from a, from a revenue standpoint in, in that regard. So those are just some high-level things relative to process. It's a long process, lots of opportunities to provide comments and, and certainly we welcome a lot of the comments that, that people have made and it, those are the types of comments that ultimately can make a better project. And the, and the last thing I would mention relative to acquiring additional parcels, I, I put my developer hat on, while that is certainly viable, there comes a time where you gotta fish or cup bait because you can't be redoing plans, you can't be, once you're before the zoning board, you, if you add a parcel, you gotta go back in and not start from scratch, but pretty close. So there's a time where you've made your best effort and then you just gotta, you, you gotta, you know, ride with, with, with the car that you're driving. Um, so we're not at that point yet, but eventually, because otherwise you have a permit or you're going through and then we have owners come out and say, oh, buy my property and it just, it gets, it gets bogged down. So, you know, I, I know my client is serious about, about those opportunities, but eventually it's kind of like, this is, this is the plan, this is the parcel, and this is what we're doing.
Yeah. I want to state, this, this board wants development, we want the right-scale development. Uh, we had a hand in the back, gentlemen. Who added up first? Uh, over here.
I'm Cadence Thomas, twenty-one Arlington Street, which is in this picture at the very edge. Arlington Street is the street that ends direct up and right about at the corner of this, this proposed project. And Arlington Street is a one-block-long street and it's often a cut-through street for a lot of traffic, especially particularly when there's a train in town, people wanna cut through and zip-zip one way or the other. So there's a lot of traffic already moving through there. We have a very particular parking regulation on that block. There's no parking on one side and on the other side of the street, uh, there's no parking after, until ten-thirty in the morning and that's to prevent commuters from using the street. Um, I'm curious to, so, you know, sometimes we have guests at our house and we need to use the street in front of our house, other people in the neighborhood use the street in front of our house. I'm curious to know for these seventy-seven units, where their visitors will park? Um, and, and what the impact will be on parking in particular on, on Arlington Street, which is the most obvious, uh, place to park that doesn't, the, the street Prescott has residents-only parking, you have to have a sticker in order to park on that street. So Arlington Street would, in front of my house, would be essentially the first, its place to go.
Yes, sir.
Um, where, where, where will residents, uh, visitors park? Please.
Honestly, most of the projects that have been involved when, um, it, it, it all goes back to the, when, even when zoning does apply, is that, is that required for any apartment building? Most of them don't require visitor parking spaces, they, they just don't, most of them. Um, that hasn't been the standard for apartment buildings, whether they're thirty units or three hundred, they, they normally just don't have that. Um, there's obviously, you know, potentially some at night or weekend potential here that may not be true during the day, presumably that most of the people, as you discussed, would, would not be here during the day because they're, they're commuting, most likely, a lot of them probably into town. But there's no dedicated visitor parking that's part of this site.
Gentlemen, here.
Tom, just to respond to the gentleman's comment, this, this board, although relatively young and tenured here, has lived in the town probably in excess of two decades each and we're no stranger to fortyBs. Uh, we've got another application in front of us now. We really are in for the long haul and while we understand the forty-B exempts the developer from many of the zoning requirements, we do look for a cooperative and thoughtful response to our concerns. And many of the people here tonight are here because they are directly impacted, we aren't. But in some greater sense, we are responsible for all those that aren't here tonight and we are gonna be looking for, I think, a responsible, thoughtful and, at the end of the day, accommodating approach. Obviously, this is the first round, I understand it's conceptual, there's a lot more cards to play before you see the final, but we get it. And, uh, I, I understand all the comments here are being taken in, but I, I wouldn't ask the group to be as proactive and responsive as this board as you can be. We understand we can't necessarily direct what you do, uh, but on the other hand, we have a vested interest as you do, as you do, to see that this turns out favorable for everyone. We're not looking for a, a greater congestion, we're not looking for an ice or, these residents are not looking to make their lives more difficult, their children's lives more difficult and there's gotta be a happy medium somewhere, so it's up to us collectively to find it.
Uh, gentleman over here.
Hi, Damon Musk on fifty-two Washington Street. Uh, really just one comment and then one question for the board. I've definitely egged a lot of the sentiments here and the consultant that was just speaking, I totally appreciate the candor and it's very good perspective on the process, but you guys are completely kidding yourselves about the parking. It's just, I, I can't tell you how many, even, every time a sidewalk has to be disrupted in this neighborhood, it completely, there's been many meetings around parking here and you guys are, you've gotta study that more because you're, you're kidding yourself. As, as far as the board goes, I'm curious, if, if we fast forward and there's seventy-seven units that are on board now, where do we stand as a town as a whole? Like, how many units short are we before this is sort of...
Commend that question.
Yep. Um, so we've, uh, actually have a, an approved housing production plan that the Board of Selectmen, um, adopted almost two years ago and the state also has approved it. So it's a, it's a roadmap to help us get there. The problem with the ten percent requirement is as new units are added in the community, even though you're adding some affordable units, you're also adding to the total. And the way the state calculates it is not really accurate, you only catch up to the total with every decennial census. So even if we look like we're getting closer, when they update their next census, federal census, all those additional units that have been built during this housing boom and this construction boom are gonna probably diminish whatever gains we've made.
It's probably getting, I'm sure it's not a static linear equation, but are we, are we far, like, is it a huge gap? We're like two hundred units short.
It's, it's just under two hundred.
Wow.
But that's, that's, if you put your hand on any further production of housing, which we know isn't what's happening.
So the numerator, the fraction changes every year, the denominator changes every once every ten years.
Yes.
So you take all this progress and then whoop, you get four more back.
So you could put four hundred units at one side of town or at the other end of town, what you immediately do is drive that number you're chasing, it, it's like you can't catch it. Um, when, when that's the kind of development we have, that's one of the reasons that you look more for mixed use and some other commercial opportunity, um, so that you can ultimately catch up.
Anybody who has not spoken? Uh, is that...
Uh, so is there some chart, like if you were to not do the building B that shows like what the, okay, if, if you only had, you know, building A, whatever number of units, let's hope you reduced it by a level. That's how much you would need and that's how much the, to make it. I guess I'm looking for the numbers, like if you got rid of building B area, how much different would be your profit, I guess, that's what I'm looking for. Is there a chart like that somewhere?
Okay, uh, I want to try to wrap this up in the next ten minutes or so, so if we have questions for anyone that has not raised their hand, Mr. Blodgett.
Everett Blodgett, ninety-nine Prescott Street, uh, director at Parker Calvin, uh, also walkable ready. Um, I'd just point out to the selectmen, and I'm sure they know it, that that section of the street is where all the walking traffic funnels into from the west side of town. With the shadowing effect, it's, it's just gonna be huge. The building at sixty-plus feet, the shadow in the winter, which is the worst time, is actually gonna be on the other buildings on the other side of the street for all day. And that makes all those people walking right past that building, which is just when it's gonna, it's a hundred and eighty-five or seventy-five feet now, it's just, probably just treacherous ice and snow bags, uh, it's a real tough situation.
All right, uh, anyone else in the audience? Yeah, yes.
Uh, to, to the gentleman's point about the unit count, uh, it is important, I think one of the board members mentioned it, but in a rental project, all seventy-seven units count towards the town's affordable housing inventory, not just the affordable units, but the, the market units as well, as opposed to home ownership project where only the, uh, affordable units count. So typically municipalities are more favorable towards rental projects for that reason because you are counting, uh, the entire development as opposed to just twenty-five percent.
So just to expand on some of Jeff's comments, this is obviously a process and we're at the beginning. We met up with the neighbors last night, the director of others, and had some insightful comments and concerns, um, and some comments and questions and concerns from the board and so, you know, it, you know, our job to kind of take those all in and see, you know, how that shakes out. Uh, for shadow studies, you know, you do detailed shadow studies different times of the year, different hours of the day, um, the way the building situated and you can see where the shadow is here. So that's all part of the aspect that when you go through the comprehensive permit process, all these, working with the, um, our commit, we're still gonna work with the police, uh, and the fire department and, and we haven't just, it's so early, we haven't had those meetings yet, but that's stuff we're committed to doing as we move forward. So we've heard, you know, and we've took, took in all the comments last night, it was great, and, and all the comments today, and we appreciate everyone's comments, so, um, you know, we'll digest that information, kind of meet as a team and then, yeah.
All right, any final comments from the audience or the board?
Just one last one, so where, where do you gentlemen all live? You live in Massachusetts?
I live in Bedford, Virginia.
Metro, Wofford. Wofford. How close do you live to one of your sites?
I live about a, a little bit less than a mile. I have three projects in Bedford that I've designed that have been built in my town.
So if you live right behind one of these, would you move?
I think all my products are worth, are, are beautiful to look at.
Fair enough.
And they're, by the way, just, the inside of these units are...
Uh, we don't, we don't see the inside of units. We'll never see the inside of units. I, I live in there, so I don't care. I'm just curious about, if you, if you were director of butter and you, someone walked in, your wife and kids were there, would you leave? Would you sell your property and move?
All right. I think that calls for speculation on this.
Just curious.
This is the last shot, yep.
One comment, I really appreciate your comment about the stewardship of this area and the town as a whole. And so, um, that's what, you know, we entrust that to all of you and appreciate you continuing to live with that stewardship.
Thank you very much.
You get it.
Any final questions from the board? Uh, could you just walk us through what the next steps might be, uh, just for the benefit of the audience?
So, uh, as Jeff said, we've applied to mass housing for a site approval letter, um, the board, the town's comments, I think they have...
Rough timeframe, too.
So, and then, once we get that, well, you know, we have some work to do on our end meetings to have another neighborhood meeting, kind of work with the architect, so we're still, you know... So we're still, you know, some time away, another month or two, from kind of putting that together. It's quite a package you have to put together to file. But we're going to internally look at this and if, you know, we, maybe we have another meeting just to present to the board after, you know, the public, that comment for the site approval letter has expired, but to kind of show the board and give the board an update of where we stand. And like we told the neighbors last night, it was the first meeting of many we met at Portland Pie, and we'll, you know, have another meeting there as we move forward, separate than the actual public hearings. I think it's important to involve the neighbors and early and often in the process, so we obviously hope they know we're committed to doing that, and we'll continue to do so.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for everybody, it's been a great meeting. Thank you for being very orderly and for some very good questions tonight. Okay, I think about a two-minute break.
Thank you.
Get ready for our next final items. The developers?
Yeah.
Boards and committees at sunset on June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. By a vote of a prior Board of Selectmen, that was so decreed back in two thousand twelve, and the groups we're talking to tonight, could you put your hands up if you're here? Reading Fall Street Fair Committee, thank you. Reading Climate Advisory Committee. Economic Development Committee. Reading Trails Committee. And Human Relations Advisory Committee, thank you. The process is, tonight we're going to entertain discussion between the boards. We're not going to take any positions or vote tonight. We will do that at our next meeting. At that point, the board has, I think, three choices before, either to continue the group for term, you know, two, one, two, three-year term, recommend that it go under a different board, that board being willing to take it on, such as the School Committee or RMLD, who can now have committees and subcommittees, or to disband the board. So those would be the choices before us. So why don't we start out with Reading Fall Street Fair Committee, because that's the first in my pile here. Come on up and introduce yourself for the audience.
I'm Brian Snell, I'm the chairperson of the Reading Fall Street Fair Committee. The Reading Fall Street Fair has been in place now for five years. We will be having our sixth fair this year. So if you'd like to disband us, then you'll have to take over. I think right now what we're looking at is kind of continuing in its status quo, either at a minimum of a year plus to get through the next year's fair, or probably the three-year plus to get through the third year's fair. We are looking at potential options that might exist with respect to other entities taking over the fair, but we want to make sure that that transition is smooth and successful so that it won't interrupt the actual fair itself.
You had taken a vote as a committee to disband some time ago in two thousand fourteen.
Well, we didn't, we didn't know.
Different context? That was then and this is now?
That was then and this is now. I think, you know, the Chamber of Commerce has expressed some interest, and we want to make sure that it's a good fit. And when we're comfortable that that's a good fit, then we'll transition. And they deserve an opportunity to transition over a period of time as well. They don't want to have to kind of drop us off and pick things up. So I think that if we get that three-year extension, that that'll give them that transition period if that is a workable solution.
You see some definite, I'm sorry, you see some definite advantages to going private in the long-term, still?
I think that the advantage is to go in private, the biggest advantage is the not having to comply with the open meeting laws. But the new rules surrounding the associate membership designations will allow us to kind of up that flexibility as well, because right now, we have the biggest trouble having quorums. And so if I've got associate members that are coming to the meeting, then they can satisfy quorum requirements that way.
Okay, that's good. Very good. Any other members of the committee who wish to speak?
I've brought two other members of the committee, Sheila and Steve Goldie. Sheila...
We're all right.
Yes, I knew that.
It's late, you guys were supposed to take us.
I know, I know. We had some wind talkers tonight, yeah.
But if they want to speak, they're welcome.
The only thing I was going to say, the reason we did talk about possibly disbanding was because of the issue with the quorum, but if we have the opportunity to have associate members being voting members, that takes care of it. Our difficulty is that we meet most of the time during the summer, and we're dealing with summer vacations, so that would alleviate that problem.
Okay, great. Anything else? Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
So Sheila, do you think that having associate members solves the problem of needing to privatize or not privatize?
At this point, yes. I mean, that was our biggest issue, was not being able to take a vote because we had vacations, and we had a fairly small group. But we have a number of people who are volunteering, who come to the meetings when they can, so it's a group that's very involved. It's just vacations get in the way.
Well, and you know, this committee's unbelievable. Just kind of go on record saying that, that, I mean, the output is unbelievable. I mean, it's fun, it's good, it's productive, it's healthy.
We like it the day after, the day before, we're not so involved in the committee, but yeah.
Starting about now till about then, it's not a lot of fun for you guys, but, you know, the results are spectacular. So, you know, from, at least from speaking for myself, I mean, we want to help this thrive. So, you know, you guys are the nerve center of this. What do you want?
Right.
I mean, do you want three, you know, three years plus? Do you want one year plus? Do you, is the problem solved? And, you know, the public forum is not a problem anymore? I mean, we need to hear that from you guys.
If I may, Steve Goldie, former chair, now retired from the street fair as well. The committee right now is working with the chamber, the chamber is active in the meetings and is learning the process. It's not a process that you can learn in a week, a month, or six months. You have to go through a fair or two to get through it. And that's what we're actually, and they just started, so that's what we're working through now to make it work. You know, probably have a better answer for you, will the associates work probably by the, after the fair this year? Tell you how well the committee worked and how, you know, if that solves a problem.
So, you know, if you could wave away a magic wand, would the committee want one plus, or one eighteen months, or one two years?
Brian said between one and three, three to handle the acceleration.
Every time you go to an even year, though, I mean, you have to be concerned that you're, you know, you're halfway through the planning process, so, you know, so...
Right.
I mean, if you're going to go three years, that gets you two fairs.
Right.
You know, essentially.
And to answer your question, John, I'm not sure that the associate members is just, is going to be a definite fix either, because we still have to comply with open meeting laws, and it's the summer. It prevents us from, I mean, this is a very fluid process where there's a lot of last-minute type of decisions that have to be made.
Well, the email thing is a whole other thing.
And so that whole, all of those restrictions make it very difficult to operate. And those were motivations to trying to get out from under the umbrella. Other motivations to get out from the, under the umbrella was how the revenue is dealt with and that kind of stuff. But there was just so many unknowns surrounding if we privatize or if we don't, that it was easier to stick with kind of what we understood and what we knew and work with that. And the associate members will help in one respect, but it still is going to have its limits because of the open meeting laws.
And privatizing does take on a different flavor as well. We are in the business for not necessarily making a profit. Somebody else who's a private group is coming in and they're going to, they need to make it worth their while. And right now, this is our baby, so, you know, it's a difficult decision.
Anything else?
Yeah, just to echo John's comments, the Fall Street Fair is probably one of the most visible successes of the town.
Except for the robot.
Even upstaged.
And it's amazing, it's amazing what you can do, it's just like, people aren't interested in getting some credit, right? It strikes me, the two decisions are, one, how do you make quorum, but then it also is, what does the group want to be when it grows up? Sheila was touching at it. The town involvement may actually be confining in a way that, either due to the open meeting or the finances or what have you. You may want to privatize, it's such an ugly word, you may want to go a different way, because it actually helps the Fall Street Fair turn into something else that it can't possibly do as long as it's underneath the town. I'm not advocating it. But that brings up the prospect of a public-private thing, where you're running it as a private enterprise, but there's still some synergy with what the town does, whether it's, you know, getting the streets walled off and recreation and the cultural connection, you know. Think about all the synergies behind all the other organizations. That only becomes possible if you privatize and you open this thing up even something larger than it is today.
I think that, I think that you make some good points. I also think, though, that, I mean, we've kind of prided ourselves on the number of people that continually come to the fair. You know, the first year, we had probably six thousand people, and last year, we had between twelve and fifteen. So if we make it bigger and better and we don't concern ourselves with, you know, how much profit are we going to make, my concern is that somebody can come in and privatize it, and all the fees are going to go up and the volume is going to go down, and that's a reality of the process potentially. Because eventually people stop, you know, there's a break-even point where some small vendor says, oh, well, I'll pay a hundred bucks, but I won't pay two. And so because it's two, I'm not going to go. And so now you've got fewer vendors coming, which causes a fewer, you know, the audience to break down after a period of time. And I think that that's one of the mysteries or concerns.
Okay, I'm looking to wrap up here, Jack and then Barry.
Jack Russell, two-twelve Bizi La Cerco, and a member, the associate member of the Economic Development Committee, who started the street fair back a long ago. And we, the Downtown Investment and Events Trust, known as DIT, is dependent on the profit from the street fair. And that is, the purpose of that trust is to support events, as it says, events and improvements in downtown. And if it privatizes, there goes the input to the DIT, and that's the only input to the DIT at this point, unless you do something drastic to the EDC. But, so it's important, I think, to keep it as a town function that can feed that trust.
Okay, Barry.
Yeah, one of the things that makes the Fall Fair so spectacular in my mind is that it really is a celebration of credit. And so making it, while we had six thousand people the first year, maybe twelve or fifteen thousand people last year, bigger doesn't necessarily mean better. If it does, if it loses its flavor of really celebrating Reading, I think that we're at a loss. And I think if we privatize, you know, there's that aspect of just getting, you know, let's three, go three more sausage vendors, you know, in here. And then it just loses its whole sort of, you know, of what I think, in my mind, what makes it special. So I also want to echo Jack's comments, too, about, you know, some of the, you know, the profit that comes from that really comes back into the town. And if we do some type of private-public partnership, I'd like to see that revenue dedicated to going back into that downtown. And I don't know if that's possible, or if it is, that, you know, that gets negotiated in there. But, you know, whatever we have, I just want to just personally thank everybody for that, for all the hard work that you've done. It's a tremendous end of summer, you know, spectacular event. And I think we should look to keeping it sort of, you know, not necessarily making it, you know, spectacular. Let's keep it, let's keep it that. it that, let's keep it that.
Thank you.
Could I just ask a final question?
Sure, sure.
Been around enough years now, in terms of succession planning, you know, do you have newcomers coming into the Wall Street Fair Committee to carry on? Because you guys must be exhausted, the original starters. You know, that's something every committee has to concern itself with, is what's your long-term view?
We do have some new blood coming in this year with the chamber getting involved, but, I mean, sort of twisting arms and forcing people into the conference room, there's.
Steve would come back, I think, if he really wants him.
It's a good idea, though. I mean, it's a good idea to reach out and try to get some additional people, especially where we have, if they're not associate members, they can certainly sit in on the meetings.
Bob, this is, I've been involved since the beginning with Jack, and this is the fourth iteration of the committee, so it's changed over and has been new blood that's come in. So, and I think that will continue because it's a good event. I do think it'll continue.
Great. Final comment.
Let me ask this question a different way. How long do you need? How long do you want?
I think.
I mean, everybody loves what you do, so.
Yeah, I think that we're looking for, to get through three fairs from this.
Okay. Go ahead. Very good. Thank you very much. Next, we'll talk to the Reading Climate Advisory Committee. Feel free to come up closer or speak from where you are. So I see a rounded area here. Will Finch, Dave Williams, and who else do we have in the back?
Thank you very much, all of you. I'd like to introduce Dave Williams, you know, our chairman, presented, and Larian Sylvia, who is our, sort of, a member, a voting member, and also works for the RMLV. She's our administrator, and she just does great work for us, especially for Earth Day and organizing and getting us into RMLV and stuff like that, so. Yeah, we're here basically to ask that you reconsider us for renewal, and we did get a letter from Bob, who suggested that it might be better that we possibly might associate ourselves with RMLV. So, we had short notice, but we were able to talk about it, and what the committee came up with is that while we have a close relationship with RMLV, of our seven or so members, three of them are actually on the subcommittee for the Climate Shift Solar Program right now. We also work with them in the LEED program, which some of you might remember, a couple of years ago, so we were with them in that, which is great. We have a close relationship with them. If it wasn't for the RMLV, we wouldn't be here, because when we first started as Cities for Climate Protection, probably about eleven to twelve years ago, RMLV gave us some fund money to pay for the, we had to, we had to pay to get, become part of Cities for Climate Protection, so they put up that money, and they also provided us with a space at RMLV and a computer, and we did, we did that basic study where we found out where our, where our, we weren't green, and that's what Gina spoke to us for, and that our biggest problem is transportation and cars. So, we certainly admit, you have a good point in saying we have an affinity with RMLV and we want to keep it, but the committee also realizes we do so much more than just looking at electrical energy. I mean, years ago with Atlantic, we did a big thing on paper, plastic, paper and plastic, and we actually had, I'm sure you don't remember, but we had cloth handbags with our logo and RMLV logo, trying to get people not to use either one. We have the tree program here. Some of you might have seen the plaque out in the lobby with the tree, where you can buy a plaque by a tree. That actually, Michelle Benson was, and Gina, and our committee, that was something that we put out. Many of our Earth Days have been at the Material Academy, where we focused on conservation and an appreciation of nature. Other things, we have, well, our adaptation report includes much more than just electrical energy. You know, we're talking about all kinds of things and how to adapt to a changing climate. We talked about emergency procedures. We have our Green Business Award, our Green Leadership Award, which includes businesses that do a whole lot of things, like recycling, water conservation, energy conservation in terms of, let's say, insulation and things like this. So we found ourselves, really felt that while we wanted to continue a relationship with RMLV, we really hoped to continue with a much broader understanding and working with sustainability and a broader nature. There was a meeting with RMLV Tuesday night, and Gina and Joan weren't. We were on their agenda. I think Bob had spoken today, I'll bet, and we were on their agenda to speak about this. So Gina and Joan weren't, and they spoke basically and told them in a much better way than I'm telling you, but they told them what, basically I told you, that we couldn't exist without their support, but we felt that we wanted to be freer to look at more things than just electric power, but would be more than happy to work with them. And also what came from that was that we would work with them if they wished, to try to establish some kind of a citizens advisory board, not to duplicate the C A D, but something of what I think Bob might have been considering with the four towns, because they do represent four towns. We, on the other hand, we're basically looking at reading. So, I think for that reason, I would ask you two things. One, I would ask you to please consider extending us. I personally, we didn't talk about the three years, but I kind of think three years is a good length of time. It forces us to come back and talk to you and tell you what we've been doing, rather than, even if you're doing good stuff, it's time to come and talk to you and say, okay, what do you think, and maybe get some of your ideas. So I think the three years are a good thing, and secondly, we would ask that, we would prefer to remain under the selectmen.
Also, any other comments, comments from the board? Well said, Ron, thank you for that.
Thanks, Ben, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments on Climate Advisor, we will move on to the Economic Development Committee.
There, Carl, well, chairman of the Economic Development Committee, and Jack Russell is here, an associate member, who's been around forever in the day.
Just to sit up here. I had a rumor you sat here once.
Please don't cut us. We're right in the middle of, as you guys are fully aware, we're right in the middle of the early stages of developing an economic development master plan for the town, and while certainly there are challenges with getting this type of work done at once-a-month meetings at night, what we are doing is vital, I think, to the future economic growth in the town, and I think moving forward, there is an opportunity to maybe expand the membership of the group and get more specialized expertise in terms of commercial development, commercial finance, that type of thing. So I'd ask you guys to consider that, as you're debating about what to do with our group.
So you're referencing the letter we got from Jack, where he suggested perhaps a restructuring along the line, do you want to speak to that, Jack?
Yeah. I was following it out.
Sure.
I have sent this to the selectmen a couple of weeks ago. I think the EDC should be continued, but it should be restructured, continuously restructured until, until we have, I think the ideal composition would be a commercial real estate broker, because we definitely need that kind of expertise, a developer, a selectman, and I would fakely fingered Kevin because he's a real estate guy, and an interested and dedicated citizen, and the director of the Chamber of Commerce, ideally, or an active local merchant.
Or nominee, maybe, you know, from the chamber, they could nominate a member, if not the director.
Right, or somebody that had a point, but that throw a lot of weight in the, in the chamber.
Sure.
I also note here that the selectmen should be very selective to ensure the best people get appointed.
Jack, those are the only people we pick, you know that.
And I say, associate members should be encouraged, and particularly under your new ground rules relative to associate members. We don't suffer at this time with, we suffer from a lack of talent to do the specific things which I think this board wants us to do, and that is mainly to market available properties and to encourage and, in some cases, institute the development of vacant properties or older properties. It shouldn't be, the committee shouldn't be disbanded until these people can be brought on board, because there are a lot of things that are going on now that should be continued, things that have restarted in the past, like the hanging flower baskets throughout town. Right now, the EDC funds this from the Downtown Trust, which I mentioned previously, a source of income, with the Building Facade and Sinage Improvement Program has been very popular. Notice one of the most visible ones recently is the dental building on Main Street, the facade improvement that went on there was instituted by that program. The Christmas greenery and lights on the light poles was started by EDC and should be continued. What we really need is a budget, that's, and because we do pay some of the expenses from DPW and things like that, so it should be a budget associated with EDC, and we don't have one at the moment. The maintenance of the alleyway with the mural, the town has essentially taken that over now.
By Bun, where Bunratties is supposed to be going in?
No.
Not that one?
One up by CBS with the mural on it.
Oh, that's right.
There's no mural on Bunratties. In fact, there's no Bunratties.
The narrow alley, right, okay.
Pretty sorry.
Sorry.
The Best Retail Practices Program, we've started, and we've had, how many people have taken advantage of that? Half a dozen or so now, merchants? And that's where we hire an expert from, recommended by the state, actually, to come in and tell them things that they could do to make their businesses more successful. And lastly, the advising of the CPDC on signage zoning and other economic development matters, which we've been quite active in doing. So, all of these things should be kept up, but if I for one, well, I'm not, I'm only associate member, so I can't say I drop off and have somebody of this specific type come in, but I would. Were I voting member, I would do just that, and probably some of the voting members would be.
Depending on the night, as an associate, you may be a voting member.
So, getting the talent in the, in the committee and getting a budget so that they can aggressively do the work that you guys, I think, think the EDC should be doing, is what's required.
Thank you very much.
Just follow up on what Jack was saying, and a lot of this is gonna be kind of repetitive for you, Kevin and Bob, based on our meeting last week, but as we were talking about, I kind of pictured, I think I mentioned in a presentation to the board, re-dapping our last year, that we had discussed as a committee the idea of even expanding the number of members and almost forming kind of two subgroups, where one group is focused, for lack of a better word, internally on our existing businesses and how to support them, and the other side is outward-facing, how do we recruit new businesses here? Two very different skillsets needed for each of those buckets, if you will. So, I think that's something to strongly consider, whatever form this takes, whether we continue and expand or whatever, I think that's definitely something to think of. There was talk about, do we become a private, you know, 501(c)(3) organization or whatever, and try and do our activities that way, and while there are certain advantages to that, I think there's always the risk for a group like that to become at cross purposes with the interests of the town. You know, everyone wants their own business to succeed, and I mean, to me, that would work more for like the internal, the thing I keep going back to is the group Beverly Main Streets. You know, that's a private organization, but they, you know, work really well with the town. I'm only assuming that there are certain instances where there's some friction there. So there are certain benefits. I think for the outward-facing, selling breading to potential new growth has to be more town-focused, and, you know, whether that's, you know, through the planning staff or whatever, but I think, you know, it's gonna, that will ensure that it's gonna stay more focused on our economic development master plan tied into our overall master plan for the town.
One other thing I forgot to, I forgot to mention, that in this reconstituted EDC, I think we should have a Director of Development that was sole purpose is to market available locations for development.
No.
It could be part-time, but I think it has to be sole purpose, otherwise you get sucked into all the other municipal tasks, and that's, it has to be a budget, has to be able to cover that, that dedicated person.
Thank you. Questions from the board, comments?
I just have one last comment.
Quickly.
I finally feel like we're doing the stuff now that I joined this committee five years ago to actually do, we're getting to the economic development plan, we're starting to figure out what we need to do, who we want to target, and how we're gonna, you know, and from there, then we can figure out how we start marketing the town to those types of.
When will this plan be available for us to see?
Well, you know, we've got our second public forum coming up June third, I think the third's been scheduled for September twenty-third. Does that sound right, Gina?
Yeah, this is the work that we're doing with the MAPC.
Right. So, you know, it's not imminent by any stretch of the imagination, but, you know, this is the stuff that.
The word is, don't kill us, chain us.
Yeah, I mean, gentlemen, I wholeheartedly agree. This is, I mean, we're at a pivotal crossroads, as we know, both in our town finances and sort of where, what are we gonna look like as a town, and there's very few development opportunities left. And as you know, and as you've seen, when we can control how the development goes, we get a good outcome. When we can't control how the development goes, we get a bad outcome. And so I think we have to put all, a lot of resources into being proactive in recruiting new businesses, and obviously it means changing the composition. When you guys started, you know, you were doing, you know, basically the downtown stuff, the mural, some of the sign, all that stuff is great, now the focus has changed to some of these development hurdles, and it needs a new, it definitely needs sort of, you know, a new skillset, folks who have a different. skill set, folks who have a different perspective. It still doesn't mean all the things that we do to, you know, because obviously, for every new customer you get, if you lose two, you're back behind the eight ball. So, we do have to maintain efforts to maintain the businesses and support the businesses that we have, whether that comes under economic development, or some of that can maybe go to some of the chamber stuff, that could be a discussion. But I think, to, you know, in my mind, to not have an economic development committee at a point where we're looking at development for five different parcels and areas of town would be silver. And so, you know, I think we're gonna take that to heart, and Jack, I, you know, with what you put in here in terms of, you know, kind of the outward focus, and Carl too, we really need to do that. And I didn't see it in Bob's budget for development director, although, you know what, a lot of cities and towns have that, you know, we just, you know, we're not at that point. So, a lot of how government works in Redding is that, you know, we have volunteer, dedicated volunteers that bring a lot to the table, and I think a reconstituted economic development committee focusing on, especially on those outward things is critical.
Yeah, I think, you know, Jack, I responded to your email that you sent a couple of weeks ago, I thought it was a well-construted email, a great thought to have moving forward. The one thing that certainly strikes me, I think it's important for all the committees that are here tonight to understand is, this board has essentially been tasked with reviewing these sunsets. It wasn't this board who put the sunsets on these committees to begin with. So, you know, one thing that always comes back to me is, why did previous boards decide that certain committees were gonna be sunsetted? You know, my only rationale would be to think of, if it's not working the way you want it to, it's easy to fix. So, that's something that certainly is gonna be, you know, thought of, at least in my mind anyways, moving forward. So, I don't know that to be true, but I would assume that's why you would sunset something, that's why you'd have a certain deadline. So, kind of to your point, Jack, is looking at it and saying, you know, hey, you know, is, you know, looking at a comprehensive review of any board that's due for that kind of sunset is a good idea. You know, what's really been working, what has been working, you know, what do you want to see, you know, moving forward, you know, what are your hangups that you're hitting with as far as being things like between a 501(c)(3) with wouldn't be open to, subject to open meeting laws, or have, you know, could email conversations, you know, during the day and late at night, from the comfort of their home, watching us on TV, being very bored. So, you know, that's also an aspect I think to take into consideration, is the why so much that a previous board's elected decided that it was gonna be sunsets on.
Okay, final comments on EDC, John?
So, so Jack, I, you know, I think your letter's very well thought through. And what, I just want to be sure I understand, you're proposing that you continue the economic development committee and fire everybody that's on, because nobody on that committee hits the criteria that you laid out in your format for what goes on. I mean, do I have that wrong, or not?
No, you've got that right.
Okay, so, and so, on June 3rd, everybody's term expires.
I say you've got it right to the point, to the point that Carl made, we can expand and then let attrition take care of those that don't have the talent.
So, but what you're, what I thought I heard from each of you is that all the things that you want to do, that you've detailed, have never been done by you. Am I right or wrong about that?
Well, they haven't.
I mean, no, I'm not saying they haven't had successes, I'm not saying that.
Right.
But, you know, I mean, Carl, what you just said was, finally the things that we ought to be doing and we want to do were just beginning to do. Is that, I mean, did I get that wrong?
Well, that was for me personally, I mean, the things that I wanted to do, or what I had in my mind of what economic development is, is what we're, what we've been doing for the past year in terms of the EdSat with the Northeastern program, what we're doing with MAPC with their help, with their help right now with, you know, setting the structure around an economic development plan, with the work that was done on the whole, you know, the priority mapping.
Yeah, but wasn't most of that staff-driven? The EdSat I know was, and the MAPC I know has been pretty much staff-driven, so I guess what I'm, you know, I'm just trying to get it, just put it out here for the way it is.
Well, I mean, the question is, do you want staff making all these, all the decisions?
Matter of fact, I don't. If it's a volunteer committee, I don't want them doing that. I think that's the wrong way to utilize limited resources. I think it's quite the opposite, actually.
But you're going to have to have some staff do it, like this developer, the director of.
Ideally, I can't quibble with that, ideally.
Yeah, every, no, every, I do, I don't disagree either, Jack, everybody needs staff support, that's what makes the whole partnership between the volunteers and the staff work. I get that.
Oh, as far as staff support now, at our level now, Jesse's doing a fantastic job, no question, but Jesse could, if we had a director of development that that's all he did was look outward and try and market the openings, that would be, that's what's needed.
Well, I think we can fashion some sort of a compromise there.
This isn't an EDC comment, but this is, which is something Kevin brought up earlier, because I haven't shared this with the board. When the charter committee met for the last 340 years, it seemed like, the issue of forming committees was certainly one of their charges, and the opinions on the committee, as you can imagine, were quite wide, all the way from, there should not be anyone in the charter unless it's an elected board, that's all, to we should put all of our committees in the charter. What the outcome was, and again, this is just for everyone's information, according to the charter committee, for what that's worth, they chose the appointed boards that this body makes, that they deemed to be the most important bodies, that they didn't want to leave it up to the selectmen to decide whether it should exist, like the town force committee. As long as it's town force, we're gonna have a town force committee. So, all the boards that were put into the charter were put in very consciously with hours and hours of debate and discussion over each one, just to give you that background. For any boards not put in the charter, and I'm not saying whether I agree or disagree with any of this, by the way, they said, leave that up to the appointing authorities. You know, maybe they come and go, but a town force is gonna stay forever. So, I just thought I'd share that background, because that was a group very different than what the selectmen are and what this group, you know, usually sees in this room. You know, these were folks who, in some cases, had been on the original charter committee and were taking a real long-term view, again, for what that was worth.
Okay, I'd like to wrap up EDC, I've been a lot of good interchange here, I think I've got a lot of good information, I hope the board does. Any final comments?
I just want to, sorry, you know, our role is sort of, you know, setting the policy, I think we really need to have a discussion amongst ourselves in terms of what we think, what economic development needs to be in this town and how the best way to do it, and if we have to take pieces from column A and pieces from column B and put it together, that's what we need to do, but I think that's, it should be our role after we have a really good discussion.
Nine to eleven, and we can vote as late as the last meeting in June, although we could vote next time would be ideal. Thank you very much. Next up, Human Relations Advisory Committee, I see Camille's here, Linda's here, Reverend, could you refresh me on your name?
Kaylin Yud.
Kaylin, thank you for coming in. Come on up.
I'm telling.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Camille.
It's like the Massachusetts Senate, things get.
Well, you've got Trails Committee.
Did you forget these late nights?
You know what it's like.
I do, and I'm going, oh.
Put you ahead of them.
I remember the 11th.
Whatever you like.
Okay, should I be up here?
Yeah.
Why don't you say?
Take like five to 10 minutes to.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'll do this, I know you've been here forever and you're ready to be done.
We know all about you, so.
I hope you meant the Human Relations Advisory Committee.
Yeah, 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 what did I say?
Thank you so much for this opportunity to share what we do and for this opportunity to be, to ask that the sun not set on the Human Relations Advisory Committee. Just in brief, we've been a resource to the town since late 1960s, when there was an alleged need for it, and our goal then was to bring the community together, we, there was training that came to the police, and we developed into a committee that listened to concerns, complaints, tried to triage and find resources for people that had concerns, and, I'm really buzzing through this, so at present, we've been working really hard to bring community groups together. We did the multi-community Martin Luther King Day celebration, where we actually had exhibit tables, so that not only the Human Relations Advisory Committee could talk about what we're doing to stand together for justice, but also other groups in town could do that. This is our mission, I want to point out that the mission is not just reactive, it's proactive, it's, our goal is to provide education about diversity, to break down barriers, to help people feel more comfortable and make Redding a more welcoming community, to build bridges through programming, to provide guidance and support, and also to recognize and react to problems, hopefully before they happen, but also after they happen. The next slide is just, in a nutshell, Redding is a great community to live in, but we also have all these factors happening around us, and no one can deny how complicated the world is right now. And so, the Human Relations Advisory Committee is a resource within town to help deal with what comes up and what goes on, and to help empower residents to work together, to make this a great community, even as the world changes around us. Some of the things that we've done recently include educating people about hate crimes, thank you very much for your support, I'm sorry, I'm ignoring all of you. So, we've had some incidences in town, and it's really important that the town realize that when they do see something, then they need to call the police first, so that it's documented, so that a veritable investigation can happen, and this way incidences are documented, if it's just frivolous, but uncomfortable graffiti, or mean, or hateful graffiti, that's one thing, but if they're, if it's documented, then there will be a pattern noticed, and it's important that that gets reported to the police so that investigations can happen. We did a We Stand Together activity, We Stand Together Against Hate, We Stand Together for Justice, which was coordinated with a World of Difference program. These are the footprints that were filled out, both by adults and children across town. Zynga hosted us during the tree lighting ceremony, and we had hundreds and hundreds of footprints, which I have actually scanned in, and if you want to see them, they're on the Human Relations, the Martin Luther King Day Facebook page, as well as on the town website. But great stories about ways that people help each other, stand up for each other, and also about incidences that have happened to people, so that we know that we're doing our job. We have had visits to elementary schools, I went in and I did an activity around Martin Luther King Day with both elementary schools and middle schools, and that was fabulous, it's amazing what our kids know already. And they thought it was crazy that anyone would be mean to anyone else on account of the color of their skin. What, what, who would do that? So, and thank you to everyone that collaborated on the exhibit tables, sharing what they've And, oh, and thank you too for the funders that made everything that we do possible. One of the things, one of the goals of our activities is to continue the conversations, not just to have a finite exhibit or event, but actually for that to trigger conversations that bring the community and individuals to a better place. And we were enabled to do that by these funders, including the funders that helped us purchase the portraits, two of which you see here, by.
They converse quite a bit, by the way.
They do, I bet they have great conversations.
Especially today.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you very much for those, yeah.
Well, thank you to the funders for that.
Yes.
And there are also other portraits, six other portraits actually, at the schools that were a collaboration with the GSA, the Gay Straight Alliance, who did a survey of students, another important piece was having ownership from the students, so that what went up on their walls was owned by them. And they helped choose some of the role models and the quotes that would go on, and if you're interested, those portraits are actually on the website as well, so you can see what quotes were chosen. So, coming up, we have plans, we're working with the Winchester Multicultural Network to try to figure out things that they've done. They've invited us to spread the word about their events, and as we have events, we'll also, they've also helped us spread the word, like about the Martin Luther King Day event, and they will help us with other events to spread the word, and also because they've been in existence so many years and gone through different iterations, that they are a resource to us to help to figure out where to go next and how to organize next. I actually, oh, sorry. So, we also have an event coming up that we're collaborating with the library, which is No Struggle, No Progress, the words of Frederick Douglass, which is going to be a dramatic reading of the author's work, which is going to be a catalyst for both discussion and introspection about what freedom means to us. And I understand that his words are quite difficult and will be quite provocative, so we're hoping that each event, each dialogue brings us closer to one another, so like Leonard Zechum said, as you get to know people, you get to walk in their shoes, and you're more able to accept diversity and celebrate it. We plan to continue our collaboration with the Clergy Council and other organizations, and everyone is invited to our meetings, which now start at seven, the first Thursday of every month, at the police station in the community room, so please come. If we're renewed, we are planning to continue to listen to citizens' concerns, provide forums for dialogues, and organize educational and cultural celebrations of diversity. We think it's really important. To expand the scope of our current work, we are hoping to increase the visibility through more effective communication and marketing, including our first act, as soon as you approve us, we already have an invitation press release for new members. We love the vote from the town meeting, that will enable us to have associate members that can be appointed for a vote, again, with the other committees, like with ours, it makes it easier to continue our work when vacations threaten our quorum. So, that was very exciting. We want to continue building coalitions and connections, and consider other potential names for our committee that are more self-explanatory. So, when people see Human Relations Advisory Committee sometimes, that's not quite self-explanatory, so we want to look into that, and also consider other organizational frameworks.
Thank you. Okay, Bob had sort of suggested, just as an open way of thinking of things, there could be other affiliations besides us, we think, you should go on, definitely, but is your fit better with us, or is your fit better on the educational side? Because a lot of what you do aligns with education, just wondered if you had a chance to think about that.
I have.
No right or wrong answer, okay, just wondered if you.
We actually talked about it some, and I've talked about it actually with some people on the school committee and the superintendent. And the concern of narrowing the focus under the schools is that this really is a town purview. Like Rikasa, this isn't just about what happens in the school, yes, we have incidences in the school, and we, and I'm the town, the school committee liaison to this committee, as well as a full member, voting member. So, I love it, it's not about the schools not being hospitable or supportive, they have been wonderful in terms of they provided the programs, they provide the space for the Martin Luther King Day, they've provided communication for everything that we do through headline. The concern is that when you narrow it down through the schools, then you potentially lose the town network. It's, the schools is a part of the town, but the, this committee really needs to be a part of the, well, there are two sides to it, it needs to be a part of the town outlook, it needs to be owned by the town, not just by the schools. That being said, like was discussed with the town fair, I have my opinions on that, but we're also talking about the private to. but we're also talking about the privatization of this committee. Winchester Multicultural Network is not a public committee. They do not have to abide by open committee laws. And so, there are two sides. I've had conversations with the schools about this too, and I have been meaning to get into the town clerk to talk to her and to you about this. The concern is that on one hand, we have the police as a permanent member of our committee, which is awesome. And Winchester actually, they're jealous of that because they have to work for those connections in their town. The challenge is that we're also a place people can come for triage, to figure out what to do about things they're not quite sure of yet, a feeling they have or a concern they have. And having the deputy chief police, Mark Zagala, is awesome, but he's also a mandated reporter. So, when someone comes to report to us, there's no such thing as confidentiality. It has to be reported if it makes that bar. And so, that's a concern. But on the other hand, because we reach out to the town, right now, we don't pay for the PAC Center for a Martin Luther King Day event. We don't pay for our programs. We have access to town resources. And if we were to privatize, then we would need to add the 501(c)(3). We'd have to add a treasurer. We'd have to raise money. We did that for the Martin Luther King Day event for a specific thing, but this would need to be an ongoing effort to raise the money to support things that right now are beneficial to the town, to provide for us, if that makes sense.
I need to take some questions from the board, if they have any. Yes, Bob?
I've made this comment to the Falls Street Fair Committee because they asked, but you've just kind of asked it directly. To the extent the town is involved, at least as long as I'm here, that's not going to stop. Particularly, I think, particularly at this time in life, the police department has every interest to be involved in this appropriately. You raised an interesting point about kind of a conflict, a possible conflict. But I can assure you, again, as long as I'm here and the chief's here, we both have every interest in maintaining a relationship. Now, it doesn't matter sort of what the structure is, at least to me, or to Jimmy, I know, because he just wants the relationship there.
As do we.
And I would think, long after I'm gone and Jim is gone, that in Redding, that's not going to change unless the community really massively changes. Just don't see that happening. As I understand it, this started a long time ago on an clergy, and the police were brought in then, and that hasn't changed. It's had different structures. So, I just want to assure you that we certainly have that interest regardless of what you think the best path is.
Thank you.
And the same is true with other town resources. That was a little more appropriate for the Falls Street Fair. I said, you know, the format doesn't really change. Our involvement, it might formally change some of it. We're not voting members or whatever, but it's not like we're going to go away. So, you should rest assured of that.
Thank you.
Linda, thank you. That was an excellent presentation.
Mr. Chairman, sorry. I'd like to add one more question. It's an absolute no-brainer that you guys would continue on and needed to do so. But it would be very interesting to find out, you know, it sounds like you're kind of weighing some things. Would love to know exactly what's the best way you can move forward. How can we help you move forward? Tell us, this is what we really feel is going to work. So, you know, that would certainly be interesting.
Our hope is that we would be renewed, and then part of our purview going forward would be to research those issues.
Is that why you asked for the two-year instead of a longer term?
That's fine, and we can come back and report on what we've learned. We just, we don't know, but if we weren't renewed, we wouldn't be able to continue our learning. So, we don't want to miss anything with the Martin Luther King Day event. We hope we get back to the district, our contest, diversity, our contest. We don't want to lose that momentum. So.
Is there any reason that you didn't ask for three years or two? I mean, it's been going on since the sixties, so why don't we?
We said at least two years. I thought that we, I actually didn't know that we could ask.
Other routes, so we could re-up them or they could go private.
In case they want to go private.
As a procedural thing, Bob, as a procedural thing, because they asked to be, if they wanted to change it, can they come forward and ask to change it? And they, so the years are almost.
Yeah, the upper end is meaningless.
Probably, yeah. Thank you. We've got one more group to hear.
Thank you very much.
Can I just ask you a question? See, I wasn't at town meeting.
Thank you for hanging in there, yeah.
The ability of an associate to vote, when will that be set in stone?
Well, it's decided by the chair on particular circumstance. If there's not a quorum present or.
I don't think we have to go before the state. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, you don't have to go before the state.
I don't think so.
So, is it in place?
It is.
No, it is not yet approved by the AG.
Oh, sorry, we just passed.
Oh, it has to be.
It'll be another month.
So, just as an aside, if you don't mind.
We swear we wouldn't say anything more, but.
So, we'll.
I've talked to town council, and I've suggested two paths, and he doesn't care. So, one path is in June, you can appoint associate members, but if the bylaw isn't yet approved, they don't technically exist until it is. They can go to a meeting, they're just not real. Or you can appoint them, you know, effective as of a certain date. Makes no difference.
They can attend it, but they can't vote.
Of course. So, it seems to be simple, now that I know this. Just appoint them all in June.
Good question.
At some point, the bylaw will be approved.
Okay.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, the Trails Committee. Thank you for hanging in there. Yeah, happy trails. Linda, thanks again. We're hearing nothing but good things about you guys.
I'm Jean Jacobs.
Hi, Jean.
I'm Tom Gardner.
Remember you, yeah.
Members of the Trails Committee, and I sent a letter, so you guys may have read that.
We did.
We've done a number of projects over the last few years and have a lot of volunteers help us out and have had a lot of positive feedback. We've sponsored or co-sponsored a number of things, including the Walk Reading Weekends that's upcoming, and have been advisors to Boy Scout and Girl Scout projects around town. Since the start of our group, we've brought in about thirty-eight thousand dollars in grants and have a number of projects that we have set up for the next year or so. One of the biggest ones being the rebuilding of the Higgins Bridge that a lot of kids use.
Where is that?
It's, it goes from like Estate Lane near Camp Bryce Moody out to the Birch Meadow complex. A lot of kids use that for coming to school. So, that's a bridge that we want to rebuild. We would like to remain as a committee of the town, and a big part of that is because we interface a lot with the staff for submitting grants, for managing budgets, ordering supplies, and interfacing with DPW when we need their help. Do you guys have anything else to add to that?
We're responsible for standards. Before there was the Trails Committee, the Boy Scouts did lots of projects in the town, but they were all individual projects, so it was all hard to watch. But now we have standards, and everything is nice and yin and is all getting done. Trails are, the bridges, the boardwalks, they're built. They are nice now. Okay, let's do this on the weekend.
Okay. Questions in the, yes, Mr. Rina?
Thinking about this over the weekend, I wondered if it made, if there was any synergy between the Town Forest Committee and the Trails Committee. The groups seem at a distance so similar in that you're dealing with wide-open spaces that you want to kind of preserve and contain and generally make more accessible. Is there any synergy in terms of membership, skill sets, funding?
Yeah, I'm on both committees.
Aside from formal belonging to vote, is there, you know, one thought running through my mind is would you either merge the two or create the Town Forest and Trails Committee and thereby pull from a larger pool of people to accomplish your common goals?
I suppose you could, but the Town Forest Committee is just the town forest.
I get that part. That's why I thought of it as a distance in terms of just the general wide-open spaces. And by the way, Town Forest staff might actually benefit from being able to look at other parcels around the land beyond just the Town Forest. It's a thought to, do you get more synergy? Do you get more manpower? Do you get more funding? Do you get more grant-reading capability by doing something like that? I'm not projecting an answer, just raising the question.
No, I think that makes sense. You know, we do, you know, work with the Town Forest Committee a lot already and have a lot of projects in the Town Forest. But I think, I think we, yeah, we could learn from each other and we'd be a stronger group if it was more, you know, synergy, as you say, or more working together.
I'm thinking that might create some charter issues, John. I think it's a great thought. And also keep in mind, there's Trails outside the Town Forest, that they would have, they have purview, and the Town Forest Committee doesn't per se.
I'm assuming the Town Forest staff wouldn't stop at the border of the forest and continue on for a distance.
They could, yeah. Just be aware of those issues, yeah.
Yeah. The Charter calls for a, not a.
Because one's a fixed committee.
Town Forest and Trails Committee.
One's a variable. But it's a good thought.
But in any case, we do, you know, we're, in fact, we're working with them a lot more. I mean, it's getting better all the time. Plus, Conservation Commission often needs to issue permits for the work we're doing.
Sure.
In fact, we're going to for them on the twenty-seventh for some trail improvements in Bear Meadow. So, yeah, those, probably those three groups are working together an awful lot. The other point I wanted to make about the, you know, the timeframe, there's many times when we apply for a grant one year and we don't get it, but the next year, you know, we do get it, but then if you get it one year, sometimes the work isn't done until the third year. So, we really do look at a long-range planning process.
So, the last time you were put in motion for three years, is that the number you'd be comfortable with?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, six would be better. We might finish the work at three.
Bob, you have a comment?
Yeah, if there's strong interest in combining the two, I can ask town council. I think it could be done without a charter change.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it may require, because the Town Forest Committee has a revolving fund, it may require a little bit of a tweak at the next annual town meeting. But I can inquire of town council. I can't promise the outcome. I don't know.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
I think it's possible.
You want to keep your identity or?
More interest advantage.
Well, we really haven't discussed it in a meeting, so I think we'd have to think about the ramifications and discuss it.
I'd like to do them separate, Trails, but Town Forest.
Two nights.
Two nights out.
People realize there's a different mindset between the Trails and the Town Forest.
I actually do understand that.
Yeah. Great, thanks.
And by the way, we really enjoy what we do.
I can tell.
We're out there on weekends.
The shows.
And we rarely have a problem with quorum.
Right.
Which is gratifying.
That's great. It's an old rule.
It really is.
If anyone broke.
As an outdoors person, I get the difference. Yeah, there's a real difference between Trails and Forest. I mean, Trails are in Forest, but.
All right, any other points from anyone? If not, we will be voting in our next meeting, if not, our last meeting in June. Probably would help if asked, if we have this done earlier than later, right? Yes.
All right, and thanks for your support.
Thanks for hanging in. We apologize for the lateness.
Thank you very much.
I always send the volunteers.
Grab a hint.
Have a good night. There's two other items, Bob. There's this motion on number five. Did you need to have that done?
There's a motion, and it's in the signature file for the chair.
Yes.
We did discover this late last week. It's somewhat of a formality. We have to borrow before the end of June. And the old state law says that a portable, the way it's worded, is good for five years. And that, you know, that was when portables were designed fifty years ago, literally, in state law. So, the selectmen just have to make the motion as such. Our intention, all along, is to bend the law for ten years. The portable certainly will last for ten years. I've asked you to declare it a twenty-year asset because the manufacturer states it's a twenty-five-year asset, so it's good enough.
Yes, please.
Move for the selectmen vote that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below to be financed with this proceeds of one point two million borrowing authorized by a vote of town, authorized by a vote of town passed April twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, Article Five. Is hereby determined pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty-four, is that Chapter forty-four?
Yeah, it should be Section seven, parentheses, not anymore.
Okay, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, seven-nine, sorry. Bees Falls, purpose, modular classrooms, borrowing amount, one point two million, maximum useful life, twenty years.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor? Five-zero, the motion carries. If we do minutes quickly.
It's ruled that the board's selectmen approve the minutes of May fifth, two thousand and fifteen, as amended.
Seconded? Yeah, we, by the way, we have two items going off for signature after this, just to digress for a moment. Is that seconded? Did I hear it seconded? Okay. Any comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor. Against, abstaining, four-zero-one is the vote. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move for the selectmen adjourn the meeting.
Thanks with the thanks of the chair for hanging in there.
Didn't I see executive section?
No, it's always listed if there is.
Okay, seconded? All in favor? We stand adjourned. All right, there's two items. Everybody needs to sign, and then.